Okay, I'd like to call the meeting for, well, are we on?
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order for March 21st, Stearns County Board. Attendance will show that everybody's here and excited about the first day of spring and hopefully waiting for this note to mail. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul Harvey would say page two. Look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I got a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, are there any discussion or changes on the agenda?
Did we, Mr. Chair, did we add the tri-county item somewhere there?
In the blue folder, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And I think there's some information about the airport as well. Okay?
That tri-county issue is not on the agenda, so you can deal with that at some point.
Can we do it on the agenda?
The agenda is what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I see, I see. Okay.
What are you changing?
Just put it on environmental.
Do we have environmental, should we put it? Okay, then I'll recognize myself. Okay. Let's try environmental services. I like that?
Okay.
Okay, we'll put it there. Okay, so we have that addition to the agenda. Anything else? Now we got a motion and a second to approve the agenda with that addition, I believe.
Say that again.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to now the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that item five and 13 be removed from the consent agenda, please.
Okay.
And I'll move the consent agenda with those two items.
Well, let's see if we got anybody else wants anything. Five and 13. Okay, are there any other?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, could we maybe move 11 to environmental services?
Okay, up to environmental services. Okay. Any other changes?
Which one did?
Eleven. Okay, Commissioner Bertram, five and 13?
Eleven.
Would you like to put those? Would you like to place, do you want to handle them right after this motion? Okay. Okay, so we're looking at approving one through 15 with the, with pulling five, 11 and 13. Okay?
I make that motion.
Okay, Commissioner Linsmeyer will move that?
I'll second.
Bertram is going to second that. Any more discussion or changes? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. All right, Commissioner Bertram.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I asked Randy to explain number three. Obviously, when you start dealing in $2 million and affecting the property in St. Augusta, I'm kind of curious. And I didn't get a chance.
Number five, yeah.
I'm sorry, number five. I didn't get a chance to ask Randy until this morning, so he's going to explain then.
So this is a pace, it's, property assessed clean energy loan, so it goes through St. Claude Port Authority. We don't upfront any money. All we're doing is collecting the money. So they're doing some energy efficiencies, and I think it's building envelope, high back and electrical lighting improvements. And so it's a way for them to fund some energy efficiency improvements. So all we do is collect the money and we send it to them. And then, of course, we charge a fee for that.
Mr. Chair, that's for the city of St. Augusta is who's working with them.
Yep.
And Mr. Chairman, Randy, have we done this before, obviously?
We have done a couple of them before, yes.
Okay. I just never have seen it. I was curious. And again, that kind of money, I thought we should maybe talk about it in public and see what it is. Okay, thank you.
And number 13?
Number 13, I didn't get a chance to ask Jody just the details of that. I didn't understand. And I'm sorry, the agenda really hit me this time because I was really busy and had a hard time keeping track with everything. And Jody had surgery. I tried to respect that, but not a big deal. But I didn't understand, and it might be a simple explanation, but the Stone Brook Engineering and the Brown, I don't understand that relationship, I guess. Just explain that for me, please.
So part of Stone Brook's proposal is to have an outside company or a separate company do the geotechnical work to establish exactly what's going on with the pavement and the roundabouts along County Road 120. We certainly have some hypotheses by looking at the surface, but we want to make sure we're going to address those pavement issues in the roundabout. So Stone Brook is proposing to have Brown as a subcontractor to do that geotechnical work before their final design.
So Mr. Chairman, Jody, is the bid 1.25 million, does that include the 265,000 from Brown or is that 1.25 plus 265?
So the 1.25 million is the amount of congressionally directed spending we receive to be put toward construction. I just wanted to note that we did have that money going toward the construction of that project. The overall bid, including Brown's subcontract work, it's a quote "not to exceed $265,372."
And then, Mr. Chairman, Jody, what's Stone Brook's part of that?
Sorry, should have kept that open.
It's an addition, is my point.
Stone Brook's part of that is just over 251,000.
So, Mr. Chairman, Jody, just so I understand it, so it's a 250 plus a 265?
Nope, 265 total. The 265 includes Brown's subcontract work, which is right around 14, 12 to 14,000.
So it's a combined number. Got it.
Correct.
Okay. It wasn't clear to me, and I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to ask you. Okay, thank you. So with that.
You want to move both items?
I moved to approve both items, number five and number 13.
Okay.
A second.
And a second. Jody, since you left the podium, I just want to make a comment, but it's an obvious comment. You don't have to come back up here. And that is, you know, I would hope that our entities, when we look at construction, would look a little bit further into the future, you know, that roundabout isn't that old. And that plan was there for quite some time for County Road One as well. And, you know, we shouldn't have to be redoing these things. It would be better, even if we have to spend a little more on the front end. You already know that, but I just want to make sure that the public understands, we do try to look out for those things. It's unfortunate that we're doing what we're doing. All right, I got a motion and a second on passing those two items. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, we'll continue to move on, human services.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioner is Melissa Huberty. I'm the Human Services Administrator, and there are two items. I'm going to flip the agenda slightly and do the consent agenda first. There are two items on the Human Services Consent Agenda today. First item is D1 on page 97, and it's the CDC Federal Infrastructure Grant. Minnesota was awarded $42.9 million for strengthening the U.S. Public Health Infrastructure Workforce and Data Systems. So local community health boards in Minnesota will receive 40% of these funds over a five-year period. Stearns County is allocated for a little over $490,000. This CDC grant provides funding to community health to help recruit, retain, and train a skilled and diverse public health workforce, addressing the longstanding public health infrastructure needs and increasing the size of the public health workforce. The second consent item is D2 on page 99, and it's claims paid on behalf of human services clients, and I'm available for questions.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the consent item.
I got a motion. Commissioner Notch?
Second.
Commissioner Clark with a second. Any discussion on these two items?
Mr. Chairman, Melissa, just the point that was made, you know, God giveth and God taketh away, so we do all these grants, and how, how bound are we to doing things that we may not normally want to do? I didn't have a chance to go in the detail. How far does it kind of pull us into a curve to the right or to the left?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, this, these are, this grant is what used to be an allocation, but the state changed the way in which they do their allocation, so it's a grant which all counties are going to receive. But we will not use this fund unless we have a good reason to use the fund and it fits within the guidelines. And our hope in Stearns County is that we'll actually be able to use this funding to help retain workforce, of which is a problem everywhere, for those workers who are doing the prevention activities. So hopefully, we're going to use them in a smart way, and if we can't do that, we won't use them and they'll go back. So.
And, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. And again, the only concern is, which is legitimate, you know, they say, okay, you can get these funds, but you're going to be doing 1, 2, 3 that we may not want to do too. But because we take the grant, then we end up having to do it too. But again, it's not, we're not going to change that in this thing, but as we move forward, let's always have an eye to that, I guess. That we're not accepting money, because, you know, it always sounds good upfront, but it might pull us in a direction all of us may not support.
Correct. I agree.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I just want to reinforce that this had been money that came through. There was opportunity to be involved in how this was going to be structured and totally understandable concerns. This would be one of those to be concerned about, at least in my opinion and the work with MDH and our staff.
And I can understand with the grant funding too, as well, when you have grant money available, they want to put stipulations in so that the money gets spent in the right place. If you're going to have money available for homeless or for drug task force, and we're not going, just because we need more snow plowing this year, we're not going to use that grant money for snow plowing. So, you know, there has to be some parameters on the funding, so. Any more discussion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay?
Thank you. There is one item on the regular human services agenda, board agenda today, and it's item C1 on page 95. And I have with me Janice Golagowski, who is the Human Services Director over the Public Health Division. And she and I are going to provide a brief overview of the opioid epidemic and settlement funds. So, first, I'd like to provide actually a brief history of how we got to the point where opioid addiction is a national epidemic. And this information and more can be found on the Poison Control and Centers for Disease Control websites. So the opioid epidemic actually occurred in three waves. The first wave began in 1991, when deaths involving opioids began to rise following a sharp increase in the prescribing of opioid medications for the treatment of pain. During this timeframe, pharmaceutical companies began to promote the use of opioids in patients with non-cancer-related pain. And by 1999, 86% of patients using opioids were using them for non-cancer-related pain. Communities where opioids were readily available and prescribed liberally were the first places to experience increased opioid abuse and diversion, which is the transfer of opioids from the person whom which it was prescribed for to somebody else not prescribed for, which is actually illegal. The second wave of the opioid epidemic started in 2010 with a rapid increase in deaths from heroin abuse. And early efforts to decrease opioid prescribing began to take effect, making prescription opioids harder to obtain. The use of heroin, which is an illegal and highly addictive opiate, increased in both genders, the majority of age brackets, and all socioeconomic groups. There were rapid increases in overdose deaths from heroin during this timeframe. The third wave of the epidemic began in 2013 with an increase in deaths related to synthetic opioids like fentanyl, and they were illicitly manufactured. The sharpest rise in drug-related deaths occurred in 2016 with over 20,000 deaths from fentanyl and related drugs. And according to the CDC website, just from 2019 through 2020, drug overdose deaths increased by nearly 30% and have quintupled since 1999. As you can imagine, this brought about a lot of lawsuits against major pharmaceutical companies and national chains and distributors that resulted in large settlements. And as a result, opioid settlement funding is now being distributed to cities, counties, and states. And the expectation with this funding is it's used for remediation purposes, and we're going to discuss that shortly. So I'm going to turn this over to Janet to discuss some of the data specific to Stearns County.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Janet Golagowski, Human Services Director, Public Health. Let's talk a little bit about Minnesota and Stearns County data. This graph before you shows an increase in opioid overdose deaths since 2011. We get this data from the MDH opioid dashboard. Deaths near fatal ER visits and prescriptions are the three major ways that we can look at to measure opioid use. For Minnesota, what we know is that opioid-involved deaths increased by more than 43% from 2020 to 2021. Overdose deaths since 2000 reached those highest numbers again in 2020 to 2021. MDH surveys of eighth graders statewide reveal an increase in the misuse of pain medications. In Stearns, we are seeing a decrease in deaths in 2021. We think the slight decrease in 2021 could likely be due to widely available Narcan, which acts similarly to an EpiPen, reversing the effects of an overdose. Like EpiPens, Narcan is becoming increasingly available to the general public, where previously it remained in the purview of folks like first responders, public safety, and hospitals. In another measure, as I indicated, comparing 2021 and 2020 non-fatal overdose ER visits helps give us another picture. In 2020, there were 36 male ER visits with the majority aged 15 to 19, or 15 to 29, excuse me, compared to 2021, 51 males visiting ER with non-fatal overdoses. In Minnesota, black Minnesotans are three times more likely to die from opioid-involved overdoses than white Minnesotans. With the increase of near fatal visits to the ER, we're seeing an impact to lowering those overdose deaths. In another trend, fewer females are showing, using opioids, but when they do, it is likely from mid-20s to mid-30s, with a spread across much later age spans into the late 50s and 60s. In 2021, more females survived overdose, 29, than in 2020, where we had 16, as measured by ER visits. What we know is that males appear to use opioids at younger ages and with more frequency at those ages than females. Again, this is near fatal overdose ER visits and not a comprehensive survey of all incidences of opioid use. Narcan is widely available, and ER visits are not compulsory. We have much more work to do in gathering community data specific to Stearns County in this area as well. Thirdly, one of the other ways, still the most common, to be able to get opioids is through prescriptions, and then the sharing or selling of those prescription pills to others. That is the diversion that Melissa reported on earlier. Opioids initially were, again, pain management for cancer patients and became widespread after that. Stearns County, as you can, is slightly lower than the statewide average in bringing down those prescriptions since 2016. However, we still have a lot of work to do, since we can see that over 61,000 prescriptions in a county of 162,000 people occurred in 2020.
So there are a number of settlements that have occurred already, which counties and cities are already receiving funding for, and some lawsuits that have not yet been settled. First, major distributor settlement. This is often referred to as the Jansen Settlement, but it also has other companies involved with it. And Minnesota, but Minnesota will receive about $300 million over the next 18 years. And Stearns County alone is expected to receive about $5.4 million, and to date, we have already received a little over $1 million, $1,850,000 or so dollars. In addition, the MOU that you sign or will sign today is a result of pharmacy chains that have settled, resulting in an additional $234 million to Minnesota over the next 13 years, of which Stearns County is expected to receive approximately $4.2 million. The total amount is unknown, as some of the lawsuits have actually not yet settled, so there'll be more information forthcoming in some time here. Here you have information related to those additional settlements, some of which had determinations and some of which haven't. And as you can see, some of the settlement amounts are extremely large. With that, the expectation is that the funding is used for opioid remediation, and I'm going to have Janet talk about what that actually means.
So the national settlement agreements offer states and counties a three-pillar approach in order to address opioid use. It's typically called an opioid remediation plan. These three areas are treatment and recovery that increase access and opportunities. The second is harm reduction, to increase strategies that reduce overdose deaths, such as distribution of preventives like Narcan. The third pillar is prevention and support, which would be efforts that reduce addiction through widespread education. Throughout, the local response plans should include activities in any or all three of these areas. Throughout Minnesota, counties are being mindful and methodical, with most still in planning stages. Decision-making should include communities, especially those struggling with poverty, which leads to disparities, health inequities, and other barriers. We currently in Stearns have some activities already happening. We are, we've started researching, reviewing, and collecting data specific to Stearns County. Working on getting more data via community groups and their experiences could be an important part of our three-pillar approach. Educating and distributing Narcan through emergency management, through a MDH grant, has been occurring for quite some time. Sharing, reviewing models nationwide and with other counties in Minnesota has been a consistent local public health, regional, and statewide conversation. We've begun meeting with community groups in the last months and all of our task forces, which also include rural representation. We've completed two community assessments in Melrose and Holdingford, utilizing public health preparedness planning models.
So some key next steps for Stearns County are that we do need to establish a framework for our response plan with guiding principles for how we may want to spend this funding. Knowing this was coming, a small group of us in administration, emergency management, and human services have a high-level draft of a suggested plan, which we will come back to the board for approval. For certain, Stearns County will need to expand upon the collaborative meetings we've had with various community groups to work with those who have been most impacted. We need to continue to gather Stearns County-specific opioid data to make sure that we know what's happening right here in our local community. We also would like to create a website to have on our website, so people can see what the incidence rate is and kind of have a picture of what's happening actually in Stearns County. We need to coordinate cross-department partnerships and funding opportunities as they become available. And of course, we're going to need to monitor those settlement timelines and other local and federal funding opportunities. It's been very complicated to follow what's been happening, because the settlements and the state and federal government are kind of moving all at different times, and information's being shared in sort of a, up to this point, in sort of a scatter formation. But this is kind of a high-level overview of where we're at right at this moment in time. There are plenty of resources online. We put some here, and this PowerPoint will be available after this presentation. For those of you who are tech savvy, you can use the QR code right there and actually get to information as well. And with that, we're available for questions, and we'll answer them to the best of our knowledge.
Or do you have some questions? I do, but I'll let you folks go ahead and go first, if you want to go first.
This used to be considered an urban phenomenon, and while this area is more urban than it used to be, the reality is, we're not being, we're not missing out on the destruction. This problem, I mean, this issue addresses, so, you know, it is appropriate that we take this up. But it doesn't seem to be an answer in some respects, because the drugs of choice keep changing. The reason, and for reasons that, for example... The reason, and for reasons that, for example, a retailer could explain, one of the reasons that we, that the current drugs of choice came about is because heroin got too expensive, and plus it was too dangerous and easy to detect for law enforcement. So hence, we have the drugs we have now. But we can run, but we can't hide, and the time has come. I don't know that this will be the answer, but we have to do the best we can to get a grip on this.
Melissa and Janet, I appreciate your information. I want to ask, Sheriff, could I ask you to come up to the podium, too? Because I've got a couple of questions, and I think all three of you can answer the questions. Commissioner Bertram, do you have something?
Oh, wait.
Okay. We've got a lot on the agenda today. However, this topic is something we can't dismiss, we can't put aside. It's huge. I'm very uninformed about it. I've heard about it, you know, through AMC and the media, but I'm pretty much insulated on the reality of what's happening. Obviously, we got to address it. I hear from law enforcement that this, these overdoses are common. We've had a number, I know, of issues in Stearns County, particularly in Sartell area, of overdoses, and we've reacted, and that Narcan has helped those individuals. To what extent do we have that Narcan available, to be available for that? If somebody sees, okay, we've got a person that is OD'd here, he can save a life. I don't know where to get Narcan. What do we do?
That's a tall question. What do we do?
Yeah.
As far as Narcan goes, the, our agency is fully supplied through emergency management is where we obtain ours, and then we maintain kind of a program for our local partners. It is up to them to let us know when they're short on it. Narcan is not cheap, but we have used it, both in the county and in the city. Here in St. Cloud is probably more frequent use. You don't see it as much in the small towns. I will tell you that there's fentanyl everywhere. You know, we did a traffic stop two months ago in Eden Valley. The individual had 500 pills, which is probably enough to wipe out all of Eden Valley, and a handgun. And that's, you know, a town of 800. So it's, it's out in the county, it is out here. But yeah, fentanyl, or excuse me, Narcan, we're supplied with, and we don't seem to have an issue with that. We are seeing sometimes where it's taking four to five to six doses of Narcan to bring somebody back, and at the expense that it is, it is expensive, but obviously, it's a human life.
Okay. And so all of our local agency police officers, our offices that have that available?
To my knowledge, all local law enforcement, all ambulance companies in Stearns County, and all fire departments. I'm not sure about every volunteer fire department. If they have a rescue squad or an ambulance, probably have it, but, you know, I know St. Cloud Fire Department has it onboard.
Okay. Then when we talk about these opioids, are these illegal coming from outside the country, produced inside the country, or are they coming from regular pharmaceuticals that are just being channeled into the black market? Where is the majority of this stuff coming from?
Based on the information from our drug task force here, a lot of it is coming out of Mexico. It's being smuggled in, in the pill form typically, you know, but, you know, I would imagine there's ways, although it's much harder than it used to be, to get fake prescriptions here and through doctors and that type of thing. That used to be a little more commonplace. Not even fake prescriptions, just you come and say you have a back pain, seemed like it was pretty status quo to just give you an opioid, you know, prescription, send you on your way, where it's not the same anymore in the medical field.
Okay. And, and so again, I'm naive and uninformed, because originally, I had thought the problem was, again, over prescription and people just using it and sharing it from doctors' prescriptions. But now it's become a drug of choice just to be used recreationally, even for those people not being addicted through a prescription. Correct? Is that what I'm seeing?
You're correct.
Yeah. And Mr. Chair Commissioners, I can say, too, like, the waves that happened originally was prescriptions and the pharmaceutical companies were pushing it as a non-addictive substance.
Right.
And of course, it wasn't addictive substance. That's why the settlements are, they're having to pay back into the system because they were pushing, and some knowingly pushing, the substances and prescriptions, even when they knew already that they were addictive and causing problems.
Yeah. And so then, I mean, one of the solutions would have been at that time is to, you know, be more restrictive and making sure that they're doing it prescribed only for those people that necessarily couldn't get relief from another source. Now it's blossomed into a whole new animal, correct?
Correct. Correct.
Yeah. In fact, one of the newest trends, and I always say we're kind of lucky to be in the middle of the United States, because usually, these drug trends start on the east or the west coast. We have a little bit of time to see them coming and get ready for them. We're not very ingenuity in Minnesota as far as coming up with new ideas on drugs. So, but fentanyl is being mixed in the marijuana now at this point to try and get you addicted to it. And, and so we're starting to see that a little bit, where you go and buy your $20 bag of marijuana to smoke, but it's been laced with fentanyl by the cartels to try and get you a little bit hooked on that.
Turn you into a customer.
Well, so, just to, yeah, to broaden their customer base to get, to get more money.
It's very highly addictive, so it's easy to do.
Yep.
And it's being mixed with a number of other drugs, including cocaine and other things.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, again, I'm glad we have it on the agenda. We're talking about it because we've got so many other things that we are involved with, but obviously, we can't put this on the back burner.
Mr. Chair, to that end, I know it's not about the opioids specifically, but it might be a great learning tool for us to get an update about some of the things that are being laced in lots of things, like, it's not just pot. I mean, it's, it could be almost anything. I mean, there's a lot of scary, use a strong word here, but I won't, this is a public meeting, stuff floating around, and it's hard for people to know. Sometimes it's in beverages, certain drugs that they might think are fine, and other times, it's, it's something else they might be ingesting. So we're living in a time that's kind of hard for people to predict, even with legal substances or, or just legal things we ingest, about whether it's safe. And that's, that's scary. And so thankfully, we've got great teams working on some of this.
Mr. Chair, oh, sorry. Mr. Chair Commissioners, in addition to the sheriff's department, working with our school districts, working with other community groups, agents, lots of different agencies, we'll be part of the communities coming together and coming together on that data, trying to figure out what are we going to do. There's other counties that are exploring vending machines for the distribution of Narcan. So we're aware that that's got to get pushed more into public availability.
Okay. And thank you, Janet. So then that just leads to another question. You know, marijuana, alcohol are issues in our schools. Is, are the opioids an issue in our schools?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Some of the data is down to eighth grade, eighth graders, young, young people.
So again, the availability for Narcan, if it's possible in the school, could save a student's life.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Bertram?
Mr. Chairman, one question came up with the sheriff, and I do really appreciate, Sheriff, that you're always here and available at every meeting. That is very helpful. And I didn't have this question before he came up, but I assume the squad cars have Narcan. You know, all the officers, obviously, have Narcan with them.
Yes, we, each officer actually has a couple doses that they have with them that, and it's rather temperature-controlled, so we have take-home cars. They have to bring it in their house at night and bring it back to the car in the day. But yes, they all, every squad car, including myself, has Narcan to respond to an overdose. And to take that one step further, we're starting to go to overdoses now where there's like a designated driver, but not, but it's just somebody that is there with Narcan, is a public member that lets everybody else get high, and then they're there to kind of use the Narcan. So we're kind of at that point where, where people are, have access to Narcan if they can get it, and are, you know, administering it to people at parties or something like that if they overdose, so.
And Mr. Chair Commissioners, that's why we'd like to get towards prevention activities, because it gets almost bizarre to start. That is good, but we'd like to get to the point where we don't have as much addiction going on.
And Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, the point that I was going to make earlier is, we're in a society that you just shake your head and you think how we got here. You know, the prescription stuff, that's, I agree with Joe, that's pretty much what my recollection is. Representative Dave Baker, who's a friend of mine from Wilmer Losa's son, because he got a prescription.
Yeah.
And overdosed. And that's just scary as heck. And now you've got people intentionally doing it. And from a societal standpoint, the cost of this to governments, and then, of course, the cost, what we don't equate into is the families and, you know, just everything beyond that. And, you know, it's all the drugs and, you know, sex slaving and all this stuff. You just think, my God, as a society, where we come to, and what do we do to prevent that? And, you know, they always say it takes a village to, you know, raise a child. Well, a lot of this is, there's a lot of family issues out there. There's a lot of people that aren't connected to a church. There's a lot of people that aren't connected to a community. The more we can do that, the less likely we're going to be dealing with this. But thank goodness for what you're doing and what you're doing, and that's all we can do, I guess, is try to stop it. Like you said, education. And then that one layer, that one leg of the stool, I don't believe that we push enough, is that, that societal thing of getting involved in a church, getting involved in a community service, getting involved in a neighborhood. I don't know how we do that to have the village help people, prevent them from getting there, especially the kids. It's, it's really scary.
Mr. Chair, I know, I know we're needing to move on, but to that point, one of the good things, particularly through public health, but I will also say through the sheriff's office, there is a lot of community engagement and work, trying to work with partners who would be also connected in that way. Like, in lots of ways, we're the connectors. We might not be the direct service providers, but a lot of good work is happening with, with that in mind. And a challenge really is, is you could have a kid who didn't seem like they were really at risk, and something happens, and ouch, they're, they're addicted. So the kinds of opportunities that you're talking about, Commissioner Bertram, are really important. I think we should be proud of the fact there is a lot of connection going out there. And then I, just really quickly, because I was, obviously Commissioner Knatch, part of what he does is volunteer fire, and it sounds like yours doesn't have, right? You, you have to work with others to get to the Narcan.
Right. Well, at this point, you and the department opted to not be a distributor of it, so, but we have local police, and we had an incident a couple years ago, you know, where we had a, a young adult, you know, they drove from out of the area and went to an event, and when they got there, you know, the young fellow in the back was out. And I remember, you know, the local police department came, and they got to give him two shots of Narcan to get him back. So, yeah, it's, it's pretty sad when you see it.
Yeah.
And, you know, to me, part of the problem is these things right here, because, you know, it's easy access, you can keep it from your parents, you know, you can...
Door dash it to your house.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chair Commissioners, we will hopefully be back soon. Administration will be back soon to have at least a draft of an infrastructure and guiding principles on this. So while we, there's a lot of bureaucracy involved in it, there's also a push that we don't want to keep waiting, waiting, waiting to start doing remediation because more kids are dying as we wait. So it's the push-pull between be smart with this, and we need to have some guiding principles. At the same time, we need to move forward with some efficiency to try to get something out there to start doing remediation. So with that, I...
And, Mr. Chairman, my conversation with Melissa before this meeting, I said, just make sure we look at Stearns County as a whole.
Yes.
The issues that are happening in St. Cloud are very different than what's happening in Painesville, or St. Augusta, or Kimball. And when you do your committees and you build this, because it's a problem everywhere.
Yes.
Thank goodness, it's less of a problem, I think, in the more rural parts, but it's a problem everywhere.
A problem.
Yeah. And when you do the task force, make sure that we reflect that into your county.
Yes.
And Mr. Chair, in some cases, there's a higher prevalence when you're thinking about people who are isolated on their farm, who might be depressed, who might be looking for ways to try to deal with their own stuff. So it is, it is really important, and I think it doesn't matter where we live, it's really important that everybody is engaged and feels like they have the tools.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. I'll try to come back to the board with less depressing topics in the future if I can.
Yeah. But again, it's something we can't...
You know you are two for two, right?
I am two for two, yes. Thank you.
Too negative.
Okay. We'll continue to move on. Administration, I think, are we at E?
We are, Mr. Chair. We are at E, and under administration, you have three items, the first of which is the Stearns County Soil and Water Conservation District, and I see Dennis and board members here, so.
Distributed some of these. So when we come up here, we always give you guys a treat, so.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Take one. Okay. You got it up there?
Please thank her.
Ah, hell of a deal.
Oh, don't give them the lead.
No, no.
No.
We'll never see those again.
Thanks, Mike.
You each get one.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, there's two former Spring Hill residents in the room right now, so be careful.
That's half the population.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, thank you for having us. I'm Dennis Fuchs, administrator of the Stearns County Soil and Water Conservation District, and beside me is the chair.
Matt Bruett, chair of the SWCD.
And we also have the rest of the supervisors in the crowd, and I'll get right into the annual update presentation. We do have a little video of our wildlife steward we like to show at the end, so hopefully we can get all the technology to function. There's a photo of our supervisors with the board, Chuck Opoff, Arlen Lorenz, Ken Sheffers, Matt Bruett, and Tom Gregory. Tom Gregory is the chocolate chip cookie master. We got a photo of the 2022 Board of Commissioners in here. As you know, the Stearns SWCD does not have taxing authority, so the support that the county commissioners and their staff provide to the Stearns SWCD is critical to us accomplishing our mission of protecting Stearns County resources. This is our 2022 board photo. We're looking forward to the 2023 photo when we can get that Spring Hill kid in the photo. Looking at the operational budget, we've got a total budget of about 2.3 million. Of that, Stearns County provides base funding of about 48%, and this covers all of our expenses for staff, board, facilities, and capital expenses. And the other income that we bring into the district includes state grants from base and competitive regional services, such as our West Central Technical Service Area. That's a team of technicians and a professional engineer that provides assistance across a 12 SWCD area from Benton to Big Stone. We also have some federal agreements with NRCS, and then also some smaller nonprofit and other partner charges and district-related revenue. As far as project payments, these are the, the funds that go toward landowners to accomplish conservation projects, and that includes a lot of federal funds. The Greenwich Bars are the federal programs, and I'll have a more detailed slide on that in a second. But you can see, we made a significant advancement from last year, with a lot of that being the federal funds, and we're hoping to continue that trend with the Inflation Reduction Act funds, the amount of funds coming toward the federal programs that come through our partners, the Natural Resources Conservation Service, and the Farm Service Agency is going to increase dramatically in the next several years, and we're hoping that we can get those dollars out to our landowners in Stearns County. We do pay for some of the project implementation directly, but most is paid by state and federal entities. For example, if a farmer is implementing a project with our partners, NRCS, they get an EQUIP payment, which is Environmental Quality Incentive Program. They get those checks directly from NRCS. But a lot of the technical assistance accomplished with those farmers is done by our staff. And project fund, funding is variable. As you look at the amount of dollars that we receive from the feds and from the state, that fluctuates tremendously from year to year, and our goal is to continuously send it to the upward trend, and this past year, we definitely were successful. The PowerPoint presentation is a very condensed version of the annual reports. If there are things that you see in the annual report that you have questions on, let me know, and I will try to answer those. Highlighting a couple of the federal programs, the Environmental Quality Incentive Program, last year, we brought in $3.3 million that went out to... Last year, we brought in $3.3 million that went out to farmers in Stearns County, affecting about 2,200 acres. And then also, another program that is through the NRCS partnership is the Conservation Stewardship Program of about a quarter million dollars. And another program that isn't highlighted here is the Conservation Reserve Program. We've got about 20,000 acres of CRP in Stearns County, and that is also a very important program. And that's with our Farm Service Agency partners located at the USDA Service Center where we are located. Every year, we recognize an outstanding conservationist. This past year was the Jansky Family Farms over by St. Augusta. And they have done a tremendous job of improving their farming operation. They're a Minnesota Ag Water Quality Certified Farm, which means they're meeting the state's goals to protect our farms and our natural resources. And also, they've been very active with sharing the message at field days and at other workshops, talking about how farmers can implement soil health practices and still maintain a very high return on investment. So they've been a great, outstanding conservationist team, and it's fun to recognize them. This past year, the board decided it would be important to recognize also wildlife habitat stewards. It's difficult to compare a farmer and a person that's working on wildlife habitat. It's more oranges to apple. Now, we've got a program to recognize these wildlife habitat stewards. This past year, that was Scott and Kate Schaffers. And after I am done with the PowerPoint, I'll do a short little video that has them talking about the project they've accomplished on their property. Educational outreach is very important for us. We do in-person field days, CASM radio, site visits, water festivals and events, press releases, e-newsletters, nitrate clinics, testing events, photo contests, professional soil scientists. The Minnesota Association of Professional Soil Scientists had their workshop up at Two Rivers Park this past year, and a whole lot more activities. Our board feels that teaching our youth and adults the appropriate way to manage our resources is a great way to protect them. Our Minnesota Ag Water Quality Certification Program, you can see all of the certified farms in Stearns County, and this is quite a lot of folks. And the folks that are in red are farms that have been assessed but have not been yet certified. The ones that are assessed typically have to do a little bit more work in order to be certified. And a lot of times, that means reducing the amount of tillage that they perform on their fields. And something that we have, like the Janskis, talking to farmers about how to reduce tillage and still maintain that high level of return on investment, it really is helpful in convincing these folks to move forward in that direction.
Dennis, if I may interrupt, then the certification, though, does everybody get assessed? Or...
Only the people, it's a voluntary program. So we do try to let folks know that we're here to assess and provide technical assistance. The farmers that do get certified have a 10-year protection from state and federal regulations, that they'll see no more regulatory controls come onto them because they're doing everything they can.
So there's an incentive there?
Yes. And they also get a 12-pack of Third Street Brewery beer.
I was going to ask about that. I haven't seen it in the presentation. I was just, you know, I know cookies come to Commissioners.
Well, we'll have to work on that. Where's the beer? A good question. Thank you. Just looking at some of the 2022 project accomplishments, we've got our One Watership One Plan project planning areas identified here. The North Fork and the Sauk are completed, and we're currently working on the Mississippi River, St. Cloud. And then probably next year or the following year, we'll be working on the Mississippi River, Sartell Planning Boundary. We do have occasionally folks that come to us that have impacts from upstream landowners, you know, like soil loss, soil erosion, and it's depositing on their lakeshore or on their driveway. And some counties have a soil loss ordinance where the county takes the regulatory control and then work with their local SWCD to provide the technical and financial assistance to address that. If the county board would like us to work with the Environmental Services Department at any time to develop that, we certainly could. We don't have any regulatory controls, and we want to keep it that way. And because a lot of the work that we do is all volunteer, voluntarily. And there's just an opportunity there to work closely with your Environmental Services Department if the county commissioner so would desire. Just a few project highlights. This is for the wildlife habitat component. We've got a Conservation Reserve Enhancement Program highlighted. This is the Kate and Scott Schaffers project. We also had a woodland stewardship plan that protects over 7,000 feet of critically sensitive shoreline on Rice Lake. And also, a conservation easement and wetland restoration that was on 76-plus acres of high-quality habitat that's permanently preserved in a CREP and a Minnesota Land Trust easement. Project highlights for agriculture, we did some prescribed grazing for sheep farmer. Cover crops continues to grow in interest, and more folks are trying cover crops to maintain some type of living cover to minimize the amount of soil erosion and increase soil organic matter, and also suppress weed growth. We also have been very active with advanced irrigation water management. The state has some special funds for this, and we have over 50,000 acres of irrigated agriculture in Stearns County. So doing the best job we can in applying irrigation water is very important. And then the final project highlight is our community and shoreline. We did a shoreline stabilization project that did a significant reduction in soil loss of 24 tons per year. And then also, the Sartell County Road 1 Stormwater Improvement Project, just finished that this past year. And you can see some of the photos of those projects here in the PowerPoint, and even more photos in your annual update hard copy. And for any of the online listeners, we will be posting our annual update on our website, so you'll be able to access the complete annual update from your home very soon. That concludes the presentation component. Now, if I can move into the media component.
Is this kind of, does it kind of happen magically?
It's happening.
This is the Schaffers Original Family Homestead. It was homesteaded by my great-grandfather, Herman Schaffers, in 1861. It has been in our family for four generations. Kate and I are now the fourth-generation owners. And we are just thrilled to have been able to turn it all now back into a natural habitat.
I think the real main message here, though, is this place has just been so central to our lives as well as previous generations. We have really wanted to honor all of those generations in just creating this environment that reflects us, because, you know, we value this habitat, but we also know that previous generations valued this place in a similar way.
You know, there's the cliche of build it and they will come. We have seen that here on the farm in terms of the pollinators, wild turkeys, deer, you know, the different types of prairie plants that when we've done controlled burns, you're seeing plants that have now come out that weren't part of any seed mix, but they have been just laying dormant in the soil, waiting to be released from those controlled burns.
Scott and Kate are just so great to deal with. They're kind of your ideal landowner. I mean, you look around and see the amount of work they've done, and they're just super passionate about the place.
We really are looking at, you know, what we want this land to be. And we've invested so much of our lives into transforming this into this beautiful prairie and bringing it back, that we also are thinking, what do we want to leave with this? Like, we don't want to develop it. You know, we don't want this to go back.
He is a pheasant guy. He loves pheasants. Scott's always been big on pheasant hunting out here. And I think it's going to be huge having all this floral diversity, not only for pollinators, but along with pollinators typically comes other insects, and that's what chicks are going to need. So trying to even boost the pheasant production he already has, which in turn hopefully boosts his hunting.
Our current project now is actually restoring some other wetlands on the property. So this has actually been much more of a larger undertaking, where we're going into an area that had always been somewhat lowland in there, actually found some more tiles that had been in there and precluding it from staying wet throughout the year. And we're very excited about the prospects of what that's going to do for water quality, water fowl, and just creating additional habitat on the farm. When you look across Minnesota, there's, you know, less than 2% of native prairie that still exists in this state. And to be able to contribute to help bringing some of that back, that really means a lot to us.
For them to make the sacrifices they've made and take the steps they've taken to get it to this point is rare. They're a rare landowner, but they sure are a fun one to work with. And I just can't wait to see what we can keep doing on this property and keep building that legacy for them.
Dennis, does this mean you don't have to go so far to hunt pheasants anymore?
You know, one of the things that this does highlight is that, you know, predominantly in the past, we've been really very agriculturally focused, and that continues to be our main focus, I think. But we have been looking to, you know, increase and, you know, our diversity of our scope of what we look at to help other people in the county as well, wildlife. You know, even into urban stuff a little bit, too, as far as the landscaping, rain gardens and things of that nature. So I just wanted to add that about the video there.
Board members, questions?
Actually, just a quick comment. I think we all know this, but for the public, we literally have the best soil and water conservation in the state. And our partnering and our investing regularly is really an important piece of this. Looking at some of the other counties and what they are unable to do, what soil and water is unable to do with their ag producers, with people on shorelands, it's just night and day. And so just want to thank you for that, and I guess thank the board, too, because it's important that we continue that investment. I was wondering, can you give us any update about where legislation is that is about funding this year?
The SWCD aid is still going through committee hearings right now, and it would be 22 million in a year. Currently, we're receiving funding through the Clean Water Legacy Fund. They're trying to take those funds out of the general fund and leave those Clean Water Legacy Funds available for One Watership One Plan activities. As we're completing these One Watership One Plans, we're identifying lots of need for public resources, and that'd be an opportunity to increase that and then also provide some additional dollars for SWCDs to get technical assistance out to work with landowners.
Dennis, I certainly appreciate the work your group has been doing. It's made a considerable difference. I mean, I go back when I was a kid at how hideous the Sauk River and the Mississippi River was, and now how through some of these efforts, it's really cleaned up. I do have just a couple of quick questions, and that is with the buffers. I think buffer law went into effect 2017. It was passed in 2015. And we had very good compliance in Stearns County because we've had a good reception from the farmers, and many of them were doing those practices beforehand. We were at 99%. Do we still, do we have any issues unresolved yet that we're trying to figure out about trying to make it 100%?
Yeah, there's just a couple of landowners that are continuing to work through the process. The Board of Water and Soil Resources is a regulatory component with that. And we are doing, bending over backwards to help these folks so they don't get in a potential problem with the Board of Water and Soil Resources. Those, we've only got a couple of those landowners. Out of all of those landowners in Stearns County, only having a couple is amazing. And Ben Rulli on our team, and now Jake has been crucial and critical to delivering this buffer message in a fair and in a way that the farmer understands, and there's some flexibility where we can reduce that buffer width by implementing other conservation practices on those fields. And they just did a fantastic job of being very fair and working with the farmer in getting these buffers installed.
Yeah. I mean, many folks don't like mandates, but, you know, we have to work cooperatively. This water, obviously, is important, so I appreciate that. And the other question is just, how many, what would you say we've switched over from traditional plowing to light till? I know that was a push, you know, over the few years. How are we doing on that?
There's still some mobile plowing out there, but it's reduced dramatically in the last 25 years. People are realizing that they don't need to be doing that aggressive tillage. They're saving money by doing less and still maintaining very high yields.
Yeah. Could you quantify it at all? What would you say?
I can't, just by general observation. I don't have any quantifiable measurement.
Commissioner Notch, what's your observation looking out the window of the car?
Well, you know, I definitely think you see more. I think the input costs, you know, granted crop prices are high, but input costs were also high, and I think a lot of farmers, you know, kind of see that and say, well, how can I cut back on some of those tillage practices?
Yeah, so the production goes down, but the investment...
I don't necessarily say the production goes down. You know, it's just the cover cropping now, it seems to really, I think, is catching on quite well. You know, that's another erosion control tool as well. The question I maybe had, and this deals kind of in NRCS, and we talked about it at our last meeting, with the manure storage structures. You know, is funding increased for, is there still a high demand for those type of improvements?
Yes, there's still a tremendous demand for animal waste manure storage. And the biggest one right now seems to be sacking slabs associated with poultry production. And the Inflation Reduction Act, hopefully, will be able to provide some additional funds, because I think if you're going to address, you know, a lot of the funds need to be used toward climate-smart production practices. And if you can store your manure and apply it in an agronomic way that minimizes the addition of anhydrous or urea or other fertilizers that take a tremendous amount of carbon to create and move and transport, we'd be very far ahead. So we're currently in our first phase of the Inflation Reduction Act increase, which was just a small bump this year. And they did not include animal waste or manure storage in that as eligible expense. Nutrient management is, which is something that we always do with our farmers when they're implementing storage, is we also develop a nutrient management plan. So we're hoping that as the funds increase, we will be able to address the backlog, but we have a lot of backlog right now.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I can't help but thank you for the report, and thank you for what the board does. I've known many generations of board members. I was trying to think, Bechtel, Mr. Bechtel, of course, was a fixture for whatever, forever with the soil and water. You know, long, long time. So he certainly was a fixture. But you think, I think of the people of Urban Frank, who just passed away from the ASCS, FSA. My dad was on the county board for many years and the state board for eight years. As a child, growing up, Joe Fitzgerald, Mr. Lenzmeyer's father, Francis Januska, the extension agent, the soil and water people, and the ASCS, and the farmers trusted him. I mean, it wasn't government when you talk about, and to your credit, Dennis, they trust you. And, you know, we don't need bureaucratic people coming down and putting the fist down. We need to encourage them. We need to show them. We still have waterways and soil-water retention walls that Dad constructed that did it through the soil and water and ASCS at the time on our century-owned farm. So, but Dad would always say, you know, and we have to remember this, too, many times younger people or the newer generations say, think that our former generations weren't conservationists or weren't environmentally. My grandmother, my mother reused the same canning jars for 85 years, and now we're throwing everything away. I never saw him drink water out of a water bottle. You know, it was out of a flask. And so we, Winston Churchill said, the further to the future you want to look, you have to look to the past. And dad always said of grandpa, especially on the 80 acres that we have, it's very hilly. And dad said, if grandpa wasn't a conservationist, all that soil would be in Gruber's land. He was smart enough to plow the opposite way. Yes, they plowed it, certainly not as deep as they plowed today when they did plow back then. But there were conservation, they left grass waterways, you know, and grass retaining where the soil then came into. So that's all great, but certainly what you're doing is good and of value. And especially when you work with cities like Roscoe, that's huge. I mean, Roscoe is such the smallest city in my district, you know, can't, couldn't do what they're going to be able to do this spring because of what your involvement in. So going to those places and doing the right thing. So hats off.
Chair Persky, Commissioner Bertram, thank you very much for those kind words and, and the history. And I just want to let the county commissioners know we'll be celebrating our 75th anniversary as an SWCD next year. So that might be an excuse to have beer at, at an event.
Mr. Chair, we are Stearns County after all.
I was going to suggest, Mr. Chair, that we have a meeting at four o'clock that we could be able to find and let's skip the cookies. And I, I forgot to say Steve Selno. I can't remember. I can't forget him because again, what a fixture he was, you know. So anyway, all the people, thank goodness they did what they did and that you're doing what you're doing.
And we appreciate keeping that water clean for the bottled water, but also for the brewing water. So.
Thank you for your support. Very much appreciated.
Mike, the next thing we're going to.
I, you know, I don't know if they have cookies, but we have the fair board here with Mr. Schmitz is here.
There you go.
I think Mr. Sch, Mr. Schmitz is here with others. Is that right? Yep, you can see it. That's fine.
I got some copies here for you guys if you want to pass these around. We didn't know what we were coming into today.
Wait a minute. I think they're each a separate thing. So I'm going to hand this one to you.
Each one was.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you. We're getting some extra stuff.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. My name is Tom Schmitz. I'm with the Stearns County Fair Board. I'm the current president of the Fair Board. And with me is Steve Burick and Dalton Herzog, who are also members of our, of our Fair Board. We do come here today asking for some funding. And, but before I get to that, what I'd like to do is just give a little bit of history. I think it's been quite a while since this Fair Board has been in front of the Commissioners. Mr. Chair, in regards to, you know, what do we do? Or what have we been doing out there? And I just want to kind of run through, we got a little bit of a PowerPoint. I think our secretary got a little overzealous with the, the amount of pictures that are in there. So some of them I'll just kind of, I'll breeze through, but the gist of it is just to kind of like, you know, go over what has the fair been doing and what do we do? All right. So, you know, every year we have the fair. There has been, over the last hundred years, maybe three times that the fair has not existed. COVID was one of those years. I think it was World War II was another one. And then back when they had the, the Spanish flu. So it's been going on for quite some time. Every year we track, you know, approximately 35,000 people. We do put on a lot of free events. Obviously there's food. We have a carnival and other exhibits that are, that are put on there at the fair. Here they just give, you know, as far as when it moved out to Sauk Center back in, in 1903. An aerial view of our current fairgrounds. And some of the exhibitors that take place. Now 4H and FFA are both very heavily involved with what happens at our fair. I think we have a great, you know, communication between our organization, the Fair Board, and with, with 4H and FFA. And just something I'd like to put out there in regards to current 4Hers that are in, in the, involved in the different districts, that come from the different districts, that come out to the fair. District one currently has 20 4Hers. District two, 32. District three, 93. District four, 17. And District five, 228 4Hers that do come out to our fair and do exhibits, whether they're static displays or livestock displays. And that number has been growing since COVID. I know we've had some numbers this year from state extension office in regards to the number of 4Hers. And it has been growing leaps and bounds. So I know earlier we talked about in here with the whole opiate business, you know, people having things to do and outlets and stuff like this. 4H, I think, has been a great outlet, along with FFA, to, to, to these younger adults to have something to do and keep them, you know, keep them busy and keep them. And we do, we do, as a fair board, you know, kind of help out with that as far as keeping these people engaged. So we do put on free, a lot of free stuff on the stages. Here's one of our stages and some of the hoopsters. A lot of exhibits, not only 4Hers, but we do have open class exhibits and again, static displays and also livestock. Our indoor arena, we can see a lot of people watching. We put up a coloring board that's just outside the 4H building. That board gets cleaned off every day. It's amazing how in one day's time that board will be totally colored. People are being involved. Some of the schools from the area do show exhibits at the fair every year. Our, our livestock barn stalls, which I'll get a little bit into that a little later, but we have done some updates with that. And I'll come, I'll come to that here in a bit, how that came to be. Just some more people waiting to use the indoor arena. Another one of our, our people that we work with here, the Adventure and Egg. They come by with, or they're sponsored by the Farm Bureau people. And then we've got a larger view. That has been a big hit at our, at our fair. In regards to having people walking through and even those that, that don't come from so much so to speak, a dairy or agricultural background, they get that opportunity to have the hands on. Our secretary thought it'd be good that we had to make sure that the name of the cow that's up there at the egg adventures was, her name is Bella. We do have different stuff that, as far as photo ops that come up to the fair. Our treasurer, this is, this is her family, Jody Duchesne. And thought it would be kind of neat that the, the wiener family from Sauk Center would have a picture in front of the Oscar Mayer. Another one of our stages with, with a, with a band on it. We, we also have the Stearns County Master Gardeners that are out there showing up their wares and what they can do. And helping the public when they come through with answering questions as, as far as gardening or horticultural questions. And then just some of the crowd with our entertainment that we have. 4H Arts in Performance, which is, takes place daily, if not twice, depending on time. Again, like I said, our secretary, so our carnival, very proud of the carnival, Crescent City. They've got a reputation as being a very solid carnival. I know over the past years and stuff like that, there's some people talking about carnival rides and safety and stuff like that. Very happy to say that Crescent Amusements here, they do a very good job. And they've always met well with the regulators that come out and check them before and inspect them before they're allowed to have those rides running on the fairgrounds. We, and it's always a knock on wood type of deal, but have been, had a very safe record with these people. Our, our current, our, our county board and just recognizing with Crescent City, they've been with us for the past 20 years. So that Bengal building is probably the newest or a newer building, but that was, we had help with the, you know, as I talked about, working with other organizations with the Legion up there and helping to build that, that Bengal stand is well attended throughout our fair. Just some more entertainment that goes on at the fair. Those cement, manure stations, those were just installed here last year. There's four of them on the fairgrounds. We have a very good relationship with the Conservation Club up in Sauk Center. They have one building up there where they do a lot of, of work in. Here they have their trout ponds set up for, for fishing. And just last year they installed the new aquariums up there, very similar to what Benton County has over at their fair. Of course CASM radio stations always on the fairgrounds and willing to do interviews with different people on the fair, just more people. The Rotary Club here just got done doing a little bit of work on this building too. We had the underneath, it was getting a little shabby looking and they were very nice to do some work on that here this.
Supposed to hand this out.
Still time.
Yep.
So we bring, we do bring diversity too, as, as we recognize here in Stearns County, our Hispanic population is, is actually, is growing. And we have, make sure that we also, you know, have a Hispanic band, for example, that we come out so that they can come in and enjoy the fair also. Our demolition derby, probably one of the more popular events that we have at a fair. If, so I've been told this by our secretary, I'm going to go with it, that it's true, that we are the only county fair that currently has three nights of demolition derbies. And, and we fill the stands every night on those outdoor demolition derbies. There's quite a few out there that have one demolition derby a night and some that have two, but I think we're the only ones that have three and we do fill it up. It's nice to see too, the local fire departments. We have three of them in the area that come in and help out every night. They rotate through. The fair food, Crescent City Amusements. Some of the other shows that go on. You know, even in times of flood, we still have persevered. So here is the building that we are currently here to talk about. This poultry barn, from notes that I have, I have got here, was built somewhere 90 to 100 years ago and originally was the old draft horse barn. As draft horses have become kind of a less and less thing over the years, and we were in need of more room because our poultry barn was actually with the rabbit barn, which I'll show that in a little bit. We moved into the, into this draft horse barn. The poultry barn, oh, I'm sorry, the rabbit barn, which is right next to it there, the white one. Talking to one of the old presidents, Tony Jenison, from the Stearns County Fair Board, he thought that that building was built sometime in the 1950s. And again, that building, the one that's on the, on the left there with the slots, that at one time used to be the poultry and the rabbit barn. So last May, we had a number of storms that, that happened around in our area here. County Fairgrounds was not exempt from that. We did take some storm damage on and thus kind of the need for the building here. So that's, we had some wind damage. It's hard to see with those vents on the one side there, on the left side, those were all blown out. And a little bit on the right there. We've got some of our framing that's, that's, that's busted and cracked up. The roof is, is loose on it because of this. So we looked at, you know, can we replace it? Can we not replace it just by fixing that? And, and thought that it would be probably better off if we had a new building versus trying to reclaim that old building. And here's, here's kind of the idea that we've come up with. So what we would like to do is incorporate that rabbit barn and the poultry barn into one building.
So you guys, I don't, I don't know how this works. I told Steve, I said, I'm used to city council meetings. That's about it. So, so my name's Dalton Herzog, so I'm the youngest person on the, on the Stearns County Fair Board. So in one of those pictures, I believe I was showing horses 10 years ago, is when I started 4H and graduated a year or two ago and joined the Fair Board. So that, that's my, my background. So I've been around the fair for a lot of years, grew up by Stearns, or by St. Rose. So you all know where that is. So essentially what we're here for today, you guys, the fair has always been very self-sustainable. That, that was one of the hands I had when I joined the board was how do we keep our own dollars and cents? And how do we stay that, that we can make improvements on our own and not have to really seek large dollar amounts? Obviously, Tom was scrolling through some pictures here, but we get a lot of local business activity at the fair. We get about 30,000 people that come through the fair throughout the course of four days. Talked about the grandstands being full, all that good stuff. So we see a ton of people from Stearns County and from farther away. What we're looking at, you guys, is we're, we're looking for some dollars and cents to help us with this building. I believe you have some estimates in front of you for $125,000 roughly is, is what this cost of this. 165 is what the cost of this new poultry and rabbit barn is going to be. A couple of points we wanted to highlight was the Stearns County Fair has gotten some money from the county. In the past couple of years, I believe some requests have been about $30,000. We usually receive about 20. We have a request, a request in right now for 40. Haven't heard anything on it yet. So obviously that's pending. But our last building we built was 2000. So that was 20 some years ago. And that's our fair office building here. Again, we don't, we don't like coming to ask for dollars and, and it's never a fun thing. But it is something that when we look at the future of the fair, that's been going on for 130 years now. We, we come to a question of if we can't sustain and, and get, get some money for, for new buildings, how much longer will we be able to have a fair? And again, that was when I joined, it was, well, I want to make sure this is around for, for my kids or, and or grandkids, right? So what we're coming, we're asking for, for that dollar amount and seeing what you guys can do to give us a hand with it. So we can make sure that we have a fair for the youth. Again, touching on your opiate problem there. How do you keep these kids out of trouble and, and join in 4H? And the University of Minnesota Extensions Office is within a block or two here. Work very closely with those guys over there to make sure that kids are, are able to join this, whether they have problems with money or animals. They can ensure that somebody's giving a hand, they have an animal to show, they have a project to do, that there's something for everybody. So that's, that's what we're here for is, is seeing if you guys can give us a hand with, with putting up a new building essentially.
So with that being said, I just want to say a little bit too, that there are funds that we had do take in as far as grants that we apply for every year. There is an equal share grant that we apply for. There's also a compere grant and also with donations. So with those grant money, some of the things that we have done, I showed you those manure stations that had to be upgraded. The other ones are falling apart. We've put in new wash racks. We painted two of the barns. With those stalls where I showed you. For, for, whether it was for the hogs or for the sheep, we bought some new gates to up, update those, the ones we had were, were falling apart. We've done electrical upgrades on the grounds and we are still currently looking at some electrical upgrades. We've done sound, sound system upgrades to the Herald and Shell with these donations. And again, we've also done some, some community connection building. They've done some donated stuff too. At the start of, of this new fair year, we were actually looking at two different buildings to come and ask for. But one of them, what we have done is kind of removed around some. But one of them, what we have done is kind of removed around some of the existing stuff that's going on up there so that we would not have to. Because actually the, call it the Activity Center, but was considered the Beer Garden, that round building that's up there is also in dire need of repair. And we're going to probably be taking that down and then moving those folks into another building that we've actually moved a few other people around to make that work. So we won't have to be asked and we're looking at a second building as far as being put up there. So we do apply for grants. We do use the grants in regards to upgrading the fairgrounds for what we have. But these are considered, I guess, kind of smaller money things where this building here is actually, it's, it's a bit bigger than what we can, we can take on right now.
Over the past few years I've been on the board, made it an effort to engage local business and sell some advertising space and, and to help us with our upgrades. And, and we've had great success with that. The, the problem always comes, you can only kind of use that re, so you can only milk the cow so much a little bit. So again, it's, it's not that we haven't been proactive, it's just how do you, how do you achieve this large of a, of a, of a sum? And then coming back to saying, well, what does, what does the county think and what do they want to see, you know? And, and are you guys willing to, to give us a hand with that?
And anything else for?
Yeah, do you guys have any questions for us at all?
Mr. Chairman, first, obviously, thank you. Growing up, it was Greenwell Barley Day and Sock Center Fair. We called it the Sock Center Fair, it's Stearns County Fair, but coming from Spring Hill, that's as far as we went. So certainly, and the Wertz family going back three generations to Paul, Tom and Peter now, and then Peter's kids. Certainly a lot of people dedicated a lot of things. And what did we do, Mike, for the building in 2000 that they built? Did we do something at that point? Or do you know that, when you built the building, the office building, did the county participate in any way then?
They did. I think if I remember right, Mississippi, taking a little bit from Commissioner Nachher on this, that there was monies that were brought forward from the county board. And then, so like Dalton talked about that money, that 20,000 that we get every year, I think they added an extra 10 for how many years till that got paid off? And then that money just came right back to the board. It didn't actually come in.
One of the suggestions, Mr. Chair, that, you know, I always like using, if we do something, to use that as an incentive to say, and once you get the grants or whatever that's at, and if we would offer something that would say, okay, we'll give you X number of dollars if you can raise X number of dollars. Because that gives you, and I appreciate you going to the private sector to try to raise that. But if you could use that as a tool of saying, the county potentially will contribute X number of dollars if we can raise X number of dollars. Kind of a matching, you know, grant thing that sometimes helps you do what you need to do. The best to do is as much private as you can. And again, I'm the newbie on the board, so I don't know what the board has done. But certainly, again, it's of value. I, I know a lot of places where we, where I would like to cut spending. There aren't a lot of places that I would want to increase spending, but this certainly would be one of them for me.
You mentioned the Wertz family and they, they are still involved from the kids to the grandkids and they're coming to every meeting and, and stuff of that nature. So they, they're still heavily engaged with it. So it's a lot of the same faces and stuff like that. But it's those same people that, that, that it has to be carried on generationally and, and in order to keep it going. So is it Tom Wertz? So, so Tom's grandson Luke is the same age as I. Well, Luke's there pitching, I mean, I mean, he's helping out at the fair, whatever else. So again, it's a generational thing and you went there as a kid. I'm sure your grandkids go there, things of that nature, so.
Not yet, but they're coming.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question. So I understand, is that what you're suggesting here with the increase of the annual increase? Is that that would, that would pay for building over time or are you, are you suggesting more of a capital in?
We're, we're looking for an additional, yeah. So, so obviously we see that, I think, a request of 40,000. That, that money would be allocated to, I'm sure some of that building, but also other projects. So our, our funding is pretty minimal for, for the fair and, and our return on, on the investment is, is also pretty minimal. Trying to make it affordable for everyone to go. So, so the dollars kind of washes at the end of the year. And, and, and that's what we're looking at is, is we just need more. We need help. We need, we need assistance if we want to see this to go much, much longer.
Mr. Chairman, when are you looking to do this?
We are working on some bids right now. That would be, Steve, you'd know more about that.
Right. So I'm Steve Fertz from Albany on the board. I was tasked with the project of finding out with the space that we have, what kind of building we could put up that would best utilize the space. And that's why you see the L-shaped concept. It's kind of a triangular space that we have to work with. With setbacks from the road to the north, we can't approach the trail any closer to the north along with some power lines. So we've come up with this design to utilize it as best as possible. So we have vendors that are, that are telling us that if we can get approval, we can get this done before this fair this coming summer. So that is our ultimate goal, depending upon what we're able to find out.
And Mr. Chairman, when are you going to find the grant applications and everything that you made? When are you going to find that out?
Normally spring or summertime is, it's before fair.
Yeah, it is before the fair. Those applications, from my understanding, talking to our secretary, have all been sent out already. But those applications are like for 10,000, $4,000 generally is what we're looking at for those applications. Someplace in that neighborhood for each one. And if I remember right, there are three of them altogether. One of, and one of them specifically states that it has to be your, used towards an agricultural project. One of them we did use for helping out to pay for this Hispanic band, so we get some cultural diversity with them on the fairgrounds. They do have some restrictions on how those grants can be used.
We're in the position where the poultry barn is no longer safe. So depending upon what the resolution is, we're going to have to decide what we're going to do, depending upon the outcome.
So Mr. Chair, so the grant funding you get now is pretty much what you get, go after every year, I'm assuming.
Yes.
So this project, we have something totally outside of those boundaries.
Correct.
And then Randy, I don't know if you can expound on, if I remember back in the day, didn't the county up when they requested funding? Then we upped the contribution for so many years.
Yeah, exactly, right. And 10,000 is about the right amount. And I don't remember how many years, but I guess my question would be is, on the building that was damaged, did you get any insurance on that?
We did, but because of the age of that building, the insurance was minimal. It was less than $4,000 we got for the damage on it. But that is money we have set aside for this next project.
I, I think I heard you say that you were soliciting bids, so you'd have a hard number pretty soon.
From what I handed out to you guys, I think you should see something pretty close to that hard number.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think the only number that was not on there is.
I think I have that one. Jumbled up here.
We did have one electrical bid that we came up and that was for $12,500. So that I don't think is listed in there, but that was a separate, something separate.
So for that design, it's looking right around 165,000. We did have three price quotes go out. Two of the three have came back. Within about $2,000 of each other for materials, labor, that type of thing and concrete. Electrical bid is attached there. So the 165,000 in conjunction with the 12,000 plus in electrical. By the time we're done with old building removal, site prep, all of that, probably here under 200,000 would be a safe guess.
So the, the other thing to keep in mind is I volunteered, I said, I have some resources, so we can take down the building ourselves. A, a lot of the work and, and upgrades we do are done because some people have some skills. So it's not like we're hiring people to do every little bit of it. Again, we're trying to save as much money as possible and do it ourselves and we're not really ones to drag our feet on this either. So it's one of those things, let's hurry up, let's get it done, let's do it right and make it ready for the upcoming fair.
We do need, know we're going to need engineer drawing approval, so that's our first order of business, once we decide which direction we can go.
Mr. Chair, I was just going to say, I think as long as I've been on the board, I think that it's, the contribution from the county has been about 20,000 every year. You know, in looking at, you know, what, what the fair board, you know, I've gone to a few meetings and, you know, talked on a few issues there. You, you have to give them a hand for everything they do on their own. I mean, there's, when you go, there's a lot of volunteer time that happens. And I, in, in my opinion, you know, maybe an increase in the annual contribution is probably warranted, considering, you know, it's for the youth. And, you know, and Stearns County is a large county, you know, and the contributions pretty much stayed the same, you know, as long as I've been on here. You know, I'd like us to somehow, whether it's, can be a 10,000 allocation per year or an extra 20, you know, over 10 years to maybe finance the building. I guess that's just an opinion I have.
I, I'd like to just make a few comments. First of all, I, I appreciate what's happening out there in Sock Center. And that is a draw, not just for Stearns County, but I know from being at the booth for the county out there, there's a lot of people that come from outside, especially to the north and to the west. And might be some of the closest they've come to civilization for some of those people. So, I mean, it's tremendous asset. Personally, you mentioned lightly about discussion about that round building out there and, and perhaps demolition of that. Somehow to me, I, I would think that would be an injustice and you, there would be people in cemeteries cursing you for doing that. And I would, I would hope that perhaps you'd maybe see a reason how to preserve that and maintain that for some historic value. The, the question at hand about the building, yeah, I find it difficult for the, the board to write a check for 160, 180,000 dollars. That's going to be difficult because we have a good number of causes and things that come before us and we don't oftentimes just go ahead and write that check. And so cooperatively, if we can find a way that you can have some people sharing that and, and have a plan that it's not going to be just a blank amount. Perhaps over time, that's something that we could do. So I don't, I don't know where, what those other sources are and how readily those other sources are. But I'm, I'm wondering what direction the board wants to take on this, Commissioner Nachher.
Well, Mr. Chair, I was just going to mention to Mike, you know, I, we, we do have some of that CARES money, I believe, left over in ARPA dollars. Maybe we can do a match, you know, if they come up with so much, we can maybe, you know, match the contribution.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure how CARES or ARPA can use for this, but I fully support us trying to figure out a solution to make this work. So maybe administration can give us a recommendation on how to best do this.
Yeah, agreed. I, I, I was going to go there with, with those dollars as well too, because there, there might be some, in some pocket that we haven't, you know, taken a look and taken all the dollars out of that might be available.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I think that would be a good move if you direct us to try to find out a good way to do this. That, that also incentivizes the fair board to come up with some funding of their own too. So maybe it's a combination of some capital injection and we increase the annual, the annual amount. I'm not quite sure, but if we could go back and look at it. I, I mean, I think I'm seeing support and, and we can come back with a recommendation.
And just the timeliness of this, because if we do want to get it going, is that something we could come up with by the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I don't think that's our problem. There, you know, I, I have thought about this, what event in this, you know, in this area of Stearns County is somewhat similar? That's obviously successful in any way you measure it. And that would create hope for the long-term viability of things like the fair. The one event that has impressed me over the years as, as it's grown is this September Steam Show in Albany. A lot, well, not a lot, but there are folks there, both as vendors and as exhibitors, that could conceivably, could be interested in participating in something like this. Another aspect of this might be, how could the fair board use the bonding authority of the county to finance your project? The, and, and I don't have an idea for that yet, but I haven't thought about it very much. Another aspect of this that I'm thinking back, probably, well, it's probably one of the top, I've been at this a while, but one of the top three or four ugliest county board meetings I ever was part of. The, there was a church in Cold Spring that ran a daycare center. And we had two folks that could, in, in the audience I see, that could maybe address this in more detail. But the bottom line was, is they started a daycare center out of that, out of the facility. The daycare center revenues made that a taxable entity. And the church fathers and mothers hadn't taken that into account and were rather ambushed by that reality. I'm wondering to what extent some other creative revenue generators for the facility we could take advantage of that would not put the organization, the fair board, create a new liability because now they're generating more income. That we have, this hasn't been approached in from that angle. I would think that, you know, if we absolutely positively had to, we wouldn't necessarily have to take this out of our, totally out of our operating funds. I think that maybe there's a component there that the fair board, I, I don't know if they'd qualify, but could use the county's nonprofit status for some borrowing to finance your plans. Little disappointed that the short-term perspective you bring to us, well, we do it by now, you know, you don't give us much wiggle room there. But nevertheless, you know, it's another day at the county board. So I would like, I'm wondering what other revenue sources the, the fair could avail itself to that wouldn't create the property tax problem. Maybe I'm thinking of it backwards. Let's get the building up there and see what that turns into for a possible revenue generator. We're not being very damn creative on this, on both parts. Not on our part. Look, fellas, you're in business. Get with it. So as a result, I think this is doable. I, when I'm, when I'm, the frustration I have is there's got to be a more creative way to do this. Worst case, the fair becomes even more successful and this problem comes back again.
So to touch on a couple of your points there, we talk about revenue generation, right? So that's again forefront of, that's a little bit my position on some of that stuff. And we, we do, I mean, we, we have weddings, we have graduation parties in the wintertime. All of our buildings are full of storage boats, campers, RVs, all that stuff. Renting out arenas to different organizations that want to show animals and have events. And so, I mean, again, trying to maximize that is, is always a question. And that was the conversation we all had before we approached you guys. So for the last, I don't know, two, three years, that's been a huge topic. So that, that's, and that's not going to change either, because that's always the goal, is, is it helps us replenish and refurbish buildings and property. And, and that's, that's always at the forefront of every meeting. So we have hit a wall in the sense of our timeframe of this building's no longer safe, which was not expected at all until the storms hit. And now it's okay if we want to be able to show and use this building and have exhibitors in here and 4Hers, we need to do something. So it was a timeframe that we didn't foresee coming either.
And maybe to piggyback on that a little bit, our hope is to create a venue where, where groups are. where groups or shows or whatnot is enticed to come and use the fairgrounds to help generate revenue. A great example right now would be the Stearns County, or the Minnesota Hosting Association is looking to use Stearns County for the 2024 show season at NSOC Center. The last two events, one in Worthington and one in Pierce, were way down in attendance because of their location. Being centrally located in the state, we have an advantage there where we can provide, if we can provide a venue that wants people to come, we can capitalize that and draw some revenue off of that.
And the horsey folks I know have had events at the facility in the past. I haven't kept up. I know that, like the draft horses and quarter horses, and that's all I know about horses. They eat a lot of hay, I know that about horses. The, the punchline is, is I think I'd like to see a broader base, revenue base there, depending upon if it doesn't jeopardize or kick in that property thing, property tax thing that I led off my remarks with. But yeah, I'm, I'm dramatically impressed with the Albany Steam Show. And I'm wondering if there's some aspects of that that could be relative to revenue that could be integrated in, into our fair. But that's all the thinking I've done on that. But I think at least maybe using the county borrowing authority as a loan to the Fair Board. Obviously, the county is a non-taxable entity, and it'd be something that, I don't know if we're allowed to pass through, granted, it's a wizard on all of the regulations. That would be a potential source of income. You guys have done a lot of thinking on this, all except maybe the obvious. But the good news is you've kept it alive, kept it going. I've got fond memories there when I was a kid, and then not so much a kid, even ponder memory. But I don't know. We'll see where this goes, but I think all of that merits additional discussion.
So Mike, do you think we can go ahead and come up with some ideas? I just got a couple of things scribbled here. What about extensions? Is there any sources that could come from extensions and from them, that, from that aspect, from the state? Just in general, to the, to the group here, you know, it's a tremendous asset across the county, and we have a good number of organizations that get contributions through charitable gambling. Is there any way, you know, in the future, are you, would you be able to accept charitable gambling funds? Do you know if that's possible?
We can. And there was some that was being worked on last year already in regards to this activity center we talked about, the Beer Garden. But again, the cost of buildings and stuff like that materials is, is high. But yes, we have done some of that work.
Right. And, and as a steady source over the years, again, charitable gambling across the county at some of these small establishments, you're not asking for all their money, but perhaps a percentage of their fund that could come to the, the board. I think that would, that would really play well because, again, you draw a crowd from, from all around, and that charitable gambling would be drawing some resources from all around. So that would perhaps be, be an option. So my understanding is, Mike will take a look at possible sources here and then also taking a look at some funding over time. And then you have the dialogue between you folks as far as how much you think you can generate privately.
In the short term, you know, to get a source of funds to build, maybe borrowing, but typically the way the churches raise money is if you contribute X amount, we will build this. You're at a bit of a disadvantage if you build it and then you ask people for the money to pay for it. That's, that presents unique challenges. I've, I saw this coming up on the, on the agenda, and I thought, I wonder if we can learn anything from the Steam Show that would have merit for you folks. And that's as far as my thinking.
And what you can do to keep that round building as long as I'm around, I'd appreciate it. And then I'll roll over. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, what is worth the carousel, I do agree with that, even if you can't, you know, keep it, that certainly is a fixture there. If you have to rebuild it, rebuild it like it, because that really is a, you know, prominent thing. Have you touched base, as I said earlier, and as Commissioner Notch said, the matching, you know, using something that we would do as a matching is an incentive, having pavers with names on it for people. You may not, I see your need that you want to do it this year. You may not be able to do that if you want to really, you know, reach that kind of potential fundraising, but that's, but have you tapped into, I mean, your partners, the Knights of Columbus do a lot of bingo there and everything, the Legion with the Beer Garden, the SOC Center has a real active convention and Visitors Bureau, have they supported you, or have you asked them, the Chamber? I mean, obviously, this brings people into the community and they benefit from that, and it's a great potential resource. Explore Minnesota, there's dollars out there in the SOC Center community. So maybe what you want to do is tap into some of us, you know, Commissioner Notch, myself, I'd be willing to help make some connections on people that want to do, potentially donate some of their services or what have you, and go to that next circle. I don't know that you're going to be able to do that by fair time.
Yeah, we, we've used some of your resources, like you mentioned there, to work on the Beer Garden. So yes, we, we ran a raffle last summer, selling tickets, again, to try to preserve and/or refurbish that, that particular building. But for, again, for example, we did not see a storm coming, and then now we're in the situation we are, so.
But when we finance this, Mr. Chair, I'm kind of a cash guy, I'd rather just help them out with the effort now, whatever amount we decide on, you know, do that and then move forward. Bonding is interest and it's borrowing and it's complicated for everybody, but if we can't do it, we can't do it. But I, I would not say the entire project, no.
No. And that leads me to a question, is there any way we could delay the project and use this fair, this year, to promote the project? And, and, and that would be one of the things, as people are coming through the fair, you know, put it out there, we want to build this building, this is on target for next year, we short the funds, will you help? Oh, you know, while we're on CASM, we can talk about that, get people out to the fair, you know, look at that building, we're going to, you know, hopefully get a new building, you know, buy a brick or whatever. So if, if, if that's a possibility, that would give us a year in which we could get some public funds in, and then maybe we could then make up the rest here. So if, if that's a possibility, let's look at that avenue, all right?
Very good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's not a no.
Yeah.
It's not a no.
Okay, we're going to move on to the third item on Administration Regional Airport, but Commissioner Lenzmeyer, you mentioned ugly boards in the past. Now, I just want to know if you're talking about personal appearance or personal politics?
Both.
Okay, just curious, because I was, just curious.
The ugly meetings were experiences that came from the audience and were highly controversial and raised hopelessly unrealistic expectations. And yeah, some of those were an adventure. I should have, there were, there were times when I thought I'd have to buy a helmet, put it on before I come to the meeting.
Your next agenda item, Mr. Chair, is an appointment to the Airport Authority. As you know, you made an appointment earlier and then held off on here. You have a number of applicants, and most of you did a little ranking, and there was some commonality, and I have that in front of you. Certainly think that if you wanted to narrow the field to finalists, you, that would be easy to do now, or of course, you can simply make an appointment. How, how do we deal with this is, these names aren't, they're not public until we have finalist, like if you reduced it down to finalist. So we haven't, the names are not public. You can talk about them with the numbers if, if you wish. You can make a motion and do the appointment, it's really up to you from this point. But you do have a little bit of guidance there in, in what you did with your rankings.
Go ahead. Oh, I was to say, Mr. Chair, you obviously, us, the ones that did rank, you know, obviously number three was on all of, everybody's radar. I mean, I'd be willing to move number three versus doing interviews or.
Okay. Then we can go ahead and we can open that discussion with a motion to approve number three.
Let's see, take them in order, but I'll, I'll support the motion certainly, but I am, you know, I, I didn't vote, but I was waiting for some input from folks that were involved in the effort in the past, although you may not think that had value because we were a fully unsuccessful background. But I don't know, do you want to do them one at a time? What do you think, Joe?
Okay, what, what I think is, I was going to, I was a little, first of all, the, the process that we use, we had those applications in there, I was disappointed with some of the applications because we got a limited amount of information about their background. And I know some of those candidates were very strong, solid candidates, but they didn't brag about themselves. And if they would have bragged about themselves, that would have made it a little bit easier for us to make.
Then they'd run for office.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. It would have been easier. I, I would be okay with, with the motion and supporting that person in that I thought we had at least four strong candidates there. Otherwise, what I would suggest that we do is, is if we go to maybe, let's say, the top four or top three, ask them to resubmit an application more thorough, and we go through that, and then from that, we, we choose one of the three. But, but I, I would be able to support the motion that was made here, that's where I am.
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with the motion. However, I do believe this is a new position, new deal for all of us, not just me, because it was just created. We're lucky we had 15 applicants.
Oh, yeah.
We had, you know, the top three, obviously, clearly, it's, there's three top ones, had Lee voted, you know, easily, there could have been a second one that had four votes each. So I think because it's such an important decision, and I'm glad that the western part of the county will be represented on it, no matter what we do. But I think, I do believe it takes more attention, I think it would be well-served to have a deeper dive on the three and have more information before we make that appointment, but.
And Mr. Chair, just so you know, Commissioner Bertram, this is actually our second go around, this isn't our first go around.
Yeah.
We had two people, we ended up needing to come back at it. One of the great things, I thought, with several of these, and I mean that sincerely, several of these, is they do have, what is primarily being looked for with the board is about the business side, the business connections, not about operations. This is supposed to be more of a policy governance board, and so there are several people, which I thought was really good, like Commissioner Persky, like Mr. Chair. I was bummed that more people didn't actually say something more. It's not even bragging, it's like being on point for what this is. But the good news is we did have people who were on point.
Last time, I do remember, is that there was surprising unanimity on the board in the terms of the folks that we selected, even though it wasn't coordinated. Just, I don't know if that's a symptom of great minds thinking parallel, or the, you know, we, we've learned to recognize victims and we see them. So anyway, your results, I didn't, I didn't participate, I was waiting for a response from somebody. The results, God, weren't surprising. Now, where do we go from here? I don't have a, okay.
Mr. Chairman, then Commissioner Clark, I was, I followed that very closely because I think it was a mistake to join it. I would have voted the ways Commissioner Mergen and Commissioner Notch did by not joining it, while that ship has sailed, so now we are a part of it. I do believe there's a concern of financial obligation, that's why this is such an important decision to make. We've got three airports in Stearns County, this isn't one of them, Painesville, Bruton, SOC Center. And so we just have to be sensitive who we put on the board, because that one voice could make a huge difference based on the makeup of the entire board as a whole with St. Cloud and other things. So again, I have no problem with that appointment, however, I think it deserves the time, so I will vote against that motion, because I think we should take more time to look at the three, clearly the top three, and then have a chance for lead two actually participate now knowing that we have three stronger ones, and then get a more in-depth background.
Move the table.
That's my two cents. Well, there's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor to vote, and I would say that we should go ahead and move it.
Table motion takes precedent. I don't know much about, I don't know much about.
Before that, could I at least say something?
What do they call it?
The, and I wish you had gone ahead and participated. I mean, to me, that's not a great reason to take it.
Would have solved anything.
But the financials are absolutely a part of it, they have to be, and this is about a regional airport. We only have one regional airport, and it is economically an engine or a detractor for the area. So I think we do have good people on here.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
Yeah, it is a big deal. And previously, we actually didn't have anybody who really had the business background, we had more aviation. So the good news again is we've got a few people on here. We do have one person that everybody who participated did put in. I don't feel strongly about it, except for we probably, it's kind of like shopping for a college, there's probably more than one good choice here, and we can, you know, I think that the top three, one of them I didn't have as one of my top four, but I only put four in, I could have gone with the, put that one in as my, my fourth one or my fifth one. But moving forward so this board can actually have representation of Stearns County also seems like a good idea.
So you want to motion the table? I won't make it, I don't get the board.
I want to make an observation here, Commissioner Lenzmeyer first. There were three individuals that had scores out of the four people that did the ranking, so it would be number six, number three, and number 11. Commissioner Bertram, you know, if, if you're concerned about having somebody from outside the, the St. Cloud metro area, this person is from outside the St. Cloud metro area, if we do go back, you may not get that. So you'd be, you'd be aware of that, because we'll take.
Right. And Mr. Chairman, I did mention that two of them are from the rural area, which is good. And again, I have no problem with that appointment, however, I do deserve, I do believe it deserves more attention. That's, we've been, I asked about this a couple of times, and we've been without a member for a long time, and now suddenly it's come up, so I don't know that one more month would hurt, but again, that's, that's my two cents.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I mean, two of the top three are from, you know, the more rural part of the county, and they're both good candidates, and obviously they've made it to the list, but, you know, I guess in reviewing all applications, no matter which boards, it seems like, you know, we never get very detailed, like if you're applying for a job. So I mean, I, I feel confident because, you know, there were four out of five that, you know, chose at least one of the candidates. I, I guess I don't see waiting, is it going to change anything? So I guess I would stick or call the question.
Make a motion.
We have one.
To approve number one.
Wait, for number three.
Motion on the table is to.
Oh, we're going to do this one at a time? Is that?
No.
No. The motion is to approve number three.
Number three.
Okay.
So if we want more discussion, obviously we'll.
Well, I guess we get one on there, we're doing, making progress.
Okay, I'll call, I'll call the question. All those in favor of number three, say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye.
Okay. Do we need a roll call?
Yeah, we should. Commissioner Lenzmeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Bertram.
No.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Notch, yes. Commissioner Persky.
Yes.
Or to one.
And Mr. Chairman, for the record, I want to note that I'm voting no because I want, I would want more discussion, not against the member.
So your appointee is Mr. Craig Blonigan?
Correct. All right.
Straightforward going in.
We are going to Property Services unless we want to take that 11:10:55 break.
I don't need it.
Okay.
Let's do it after this.
Okay, we'll go with Property Services. Okay, we'll go with property services.
Okay.
That way you guys. Jake might, you can leave, okay?
Jake might want us, he might make us want to go to the bathroom after this.
Yes.
All right, good morning. We'll make this quick. Commissioners, Mr. Chair, Randy Lar, Assistant Assessor, and myself, Jake Pitti, County Assessor, with our annual property assessment update. It should only take about 10 minutes of your time, I think. Well, if you guys, if you all want, we could do questions at the end. We were actually just on Chasm yesterday. Randy and I were and had a great interview with Kirby in the morning. So we had some three callers call in and had some good questions for us and were able to explain everything well. And, you know, it's, we're getting a little more used to being in front of the microphone and things like that. So just a quick overview of what we're going to talk about. The property assessment work we completed, quintile inspections, market condition trends, sales activity and ratios, valuation changes and new construction. And just one, one reminder that all of these slides are for Stearns County data and they do not include the city of St. Cloud. So for our work in review, we started our work last April and we continue through May of this year. Our quintile is, is in the mid to upper 90% range and it has been for a number of years now. Our, our staff does a great job of getting on the field and looking at properties and doing everything that they're supposed to do out there. We, we actually set up a new way of doing things a few years back. We call it a quadrant system. So we, we go out and we look at portions of each township or city as a whole. So in the past, before that, we just looked at parcels that needed inspection based on dates. Now we're looking at the actual area or neighborhood. So it's, it's a little more time friendly and fuel friendly for our, for our staff. Our valuations were complete on February 24th and shortly after that, we sent them off to the vendor for printing. And they were in the mail, I believe, on the 16th of March. I know they hit mailboxes about Saturday, it sounded like. So everybody probably has their statement already. And we've been getting calls yesterday. The, the call volume was fairly light so far. It's, you know, to be expected, it's not as big of an increase as last year. So we've, our staff has been handling those well and no real big, big changes to speak of as far as the assessment went. So not a lot to, to question on their end so far. For condition trends, I think Randy was maybe going to talk about the time trends here a little bit. But as you can see on the, on the 2022 to 2023 numbers on the top row there across the board. If you look at the off water, say west or east, this is, this is the residential sales study. Last year we were looking at about 16% for both. Now we're down to 5.3%. So that kind of gives us a little perspective on where the market went for this past year. And maybe Randy wants to touch on the trends.
Yeah, I was just going to point out, this is a trend that's calculated by the Department of Revenue. And just the fact that there's not a zero, that there's a 0% change on the trend for some of these does not indicate there wasn't a market change. It just means that statistically, there wasn't enough significance for them to make, you know, exact number. In other words, they require a 90% significance. So I just wanted to point out, it doesn't mean there wasn't a market change in those areas, that it was just a not significant number that they could pinpoint what that percentage change was.
So that being said, there was still a market increase to be had. We were in the 15 to, or five to 15% change rate on residential for this assessment. Jumping to sales processed, this year we processed about 2,325 sales, which is down from last year's 2,642, which was the high watermark for sales processed for our office all time, I believe. So we always verify all commercial industrial apartment and agricultural sales and any residential sales that appear out of the norm. So we'll call on those or we'll email back and forth with buyers and sellers and talk to them about what's going on. Make sure these are solid sales before we send them into the system through the Department of Revenue. The qualified sales activity and ratios shown here, it's, might be a little hard for everyone to see, but the darker blue column on the left kind of shows how many sales of each property type were out there and what the ratio was going in before we made any changes to the assessment. The big one, probably the, the residential again, we were at about 1,100 sales, down from 1,300 the year before. So about 200 sales, these are the qualified sales that go into the sales study. And our ratio is at 88.6%. So that still told us we need to, need to go up on our, on our values for this year, which we did, again, in that five to 15% range. The other ones you can kind of see there, if, if you have any questions on those, you could, we can talk about that later on. But I'll kind of go through each property type on the next slides here. Also apartments, as you saw before, was about 84% was the ratio. So that tells us we need to go up. We tried to target around 95%. So we wound up approximately 12% with our apartments to try and get that ratio up to where it needs to be. Some wound up as much as 15, some not quite as much as 12, but overall around 12%. And these were pretty consistent across the county, regardless of age, location, unit mix. The apartment market has, has been moving for a lot of years now and it trends up every year. And we keep kind of waiting for it to plateau a little bit and it still hasn't done that. It's, it's amazing and we've talked to other counties around us as well. And, you know, they're, they're seeing even sometimes even bigger increases than we have. And I think, you know, not speaking for the city of St. Cloud, but I know, I know their market's a little bit different with student housing and things like that. So we don't really have to get into that part, but, you know, our, our apartment market's strong and it, and it has been for a long time. And this can kind of reflect that as well. The commercial industrial market has been pretty flat for a number of years now. We saw changes this year of, you know, negative five to plus 10%. Overall, about a 3% increase. And in the previous slide, you may have seen that we were at about 93% on our ratio. So we didn't have to move a whole lot to get to that target of around 95. The industrial sector experienced some expansion in manufacturing shops and warehousing. You know, some, a little bit bigger growth probably than in commercial, but, and the mini storage market again is, is really hot. It has been for a lot of years and that, that seems to typically follow the apartment market pretty closely. So, and I know Randy's kind of one of our experts in the office on the mini storage. I don't know if he had any.
No, just do what we reiterate what he just said. They tend to fall the same market as apartments. We've noticed that we've been tracking it for 10, 15 years and they always seem to parallel each other. And I suppose that's majority of who's renting those facilities is the apartment people. So makes sense.
Next up would be the seasonal recreational residential and residential markets. So overall, like I talked earlier, we had about 1,100 sales versus the 1,300 the previous year. So that's about a 15% drop in the number of qualified sales. The, the ratios for on and water, on and off water were about 88.6%. So that's where we got our necessary increase to get, you know, up into that 95% range. So we saw five to 15%. I mean, it varies a lot throughout the county depending on, you know, where you are, if it's city versus township, school districts. There's so many different aspects to each assessment and each assessment area that it's hard to just blanket say that the county wound up, you know, 8% or whatever. So it's, it's, it's a big difference from west to east and, you know, Sartell has its own study area and just a lot of different pieces that move throughout. But I think we got everything dialed in real nicely this year. Haven't heard a lot from, from taxpayers about that, you know, they thought their property was overvalued or they bought it for this and our value is higher than that. Things like that, that we have heard in the past so far, but it's only been one day of phone calls at this point, but.
I was going to mention too, on the, on the residential side, and it's been fueled by this for years, the supply and demand. And that's, that's probably always the case with residential. There's just not a lot of supply out there for homes. So people having to, you know, pay more than they would have, you know, if there was a bigger supply out there. So Jake mentioned supplies down about 15%. Well, yeah, interest rates are up, but it seems to be offset by that supply issue that we currently have in the residential market.
If you want to talk bear land and egg?
Yeah, bear land has been consistently one of our markets too, that people are looking for some acreage built out in the country. The same thing with the egg market, the egg market, we see very, very large increases this year. Typically 20 to 25% on agricultural, primarily if your parcel is tilled, it's going to probably see the higher end of that, even up over, over 25%. And again, this is a trend not just seen in our county, but, you know, statewide, maybe even Midwest. Commodity prices tend to drive that along with investment buyers with some of the inconsistencies in other markets. Money markets, people are investing more into egg land and it seems to be a good investment for people. Also, also multi-generational farm families are, they want to make sure they have an opportunity for their, their children to have farmland down the road. So we see a lot of that, they're, they're buying the land that's coming up for sale next to them. So, you know, they're bidding, bidding to get it. So those are the three sectors that we're typically seeing as, as our buyers in this county. As you can see, the tilable market value increased to 6440. That was at 5287. Those are just averages. And then our green acre tilable is up to 6282 from 5077 the previous year. So again, the green acre value is primarily driven by tilable value because they're just supposed to represent the egg market. So whereas the, you know, the market value represents whatever the highest and best uses for that land.
And again, we have such a diverse county west to east that these numbers will, will vary quite a bit. But this, these are the overall averages that we pulled out. Market value increases overall, we saw about a 10.1% for the 2023 assessment. And that's about a 5% decline from the previous year, which was again, a benchmark year that we saw increases for. The overall growth in market value was approximately 1.76 billion. The previous year was 2.3 billion. So we, we aren't tracking too far behind that number. You know, there's, there might be a common, you know, misconception out there that the, we've heard some sky is falling type stories about the market and things like that. But you know what? We haven't seen it yet. The numbers haven't, haven't shown that it's actually dropping yet. It's come down for sure, but not, not the, the big decline that people are maybe predicting or expecting to see. The numbers haven't shown us that yet and we've got sales coming in this year as well that are kind of tracking, you know, fairly flat to where we set the assessment at. So we'll see more, obviously in the summertime, sales ramp up again. The winter isn't a great time to, to buy a house or see what you're purchasing, you know, as far as the yard grows and things like that. So we'll know a lot more after, after the summer kind of comes to an end and our, our sales study period ends in September, the end of September. So we'll have a lot more, you know, our, our arms around it quite a bit more at that point. New construction, we had about $180 million in new construction, which is just only $3 million under last year. And we'll see later in a later slide that new home starts are way down, but the new construction numbers stayed up. And that, that can be attributed to a number of things. This is countywide overall, but, you know, some industrial complexes that went up or, or remodels additions, a lot of things that people added to their houses, things like that. And, you know, with, with lumber prices coming down a little bit now, I know the, you know, the NASDAQ exchange showed, I think it was about $1,100 per share last year at this time for, for the lumber commodity price on lumber. And this year it's down to around, right around 400 right now. So that's a big swing from 1,100 down to 400. And last, our previous to COVID, it kind of hovered in that $300 to $400 range, so.
And Jake, I was going to ask you that because look at it, 19 and 20, that's around 150 and then it goes up to 180. But are, are those just inflationary prices? So what about the actual number of, of new construction or square footage, you would say of new construction?
Yeah, we, the only slide that I have here though is it will show the new homes started. So that kind of gives us an idea. But you're right, yeah, the inflationary costs were a big, big driver of that previous slide. So it, it makes sense why the 157, 156, then all of a sudden it jumped like that.
Yeah.
So.
Mr. Chair, two, a question with that because that makes total sense. 2018 was 177, which really isn't off that much from 2021 or 2022. Is there something that happened in 19 and 20 besides, I mean, 19 obviously was pre-pandemic?
Right, yeah. And I think, you know, it was just as the market was starting to come back there. And I believe in 18, we may have had a couple of large industrial. I don't know if that's when Cold Spring Brewing built their big building and some things like that, so.
So, Mr. Chair, it may be an outlier.
Yeah, it could be for sure, just based on that. You get that every year with some large projects that come through the county, so.
I was going to mention too, the, the one sector that we did see growth in new constructions here from previous year was agriculture market again, which seems to be supported again by increase in commodity prices, of course.
So this, I believe is our last slide. We just had where the new home starts are, are at right now. And you can see, so looking back, Commissioner Clark, at 2018, there were more new homes started than two. So that would, would drive some of that, that increase. So, and obviously in 2021, there were quite a few. So we're back below what our five-year average would be at this point this year. So, and new home starts again, you know, with that interest rate going up. I think the last I looked is around 6.5% maybe on a 30-year fixed. You know, last year I think it was four and a half percent. Previous to that was well below four. So, you know, that, that tracks quite a bit, but there, I know there's some cash out there too that people have been holding on to, waiting to, you know, build with or invest with. They were just waiting for lumber prices to come back down so they can build their new home or, or addition or anything else. So we'll see, I think really this, this summer is really going to kind of tell the tale of where we're, we're headed. Not to try and predict anything, but, you know, so far fairly flat, but we'll see what happens as we go forward. So, yeah, so if you all have any questions, we'd be happy to.
I just want to make comment to thank Randy for sending out that little email, giving us, you know, a little bit of talking points. Because I've had a couple of calls yesterday too, you know, probably similar to ones that you had on Chasm. You know, so it was kind of nice to be able to get that, give you some guidance. The other thing, just for clarification, when you, when these calculations are figured, is they still drop the high and the low? Is that like on a, let's say residential, if there's one really low and one really high, do they still count in figuring the percentage?
Yeah, they're still a part of that. And I will speak to that email from yesterday. Those, those numbers where you saw the value increase columns, those are from the 21 assessment to the 22 assessment. So reflecting this year's payable, which is, so those were last year's assess increases. So help.
Yeah, I think what you're addressing is our sales ratio study. We, you know, obviously we're, we get a, a range of sales, it can have ratios at the top, some at the bottom. We're, we use the median or the typical selling price to determine where ratios are going to go. And I think that's what you're referencing.
Yeah, because I'm assuming there aren't too many outliers that are like way out of whack.
Yeah, it's a small percentage, yep.
Yeah, and those are, those are ones that I talked about earlier. We definitely call on those and say, why, why did this sell for so much more than what we're at? And, you know, it just, there's so many different reasons for, for those things. But our staff does a great job of, of getting on the phones and emails and trying to, you know, get to the bottom of a lot of those sales, so.
Thanks.
Randy? So, so the statements went out and we've been working together with the assessor's office for a number of years now. Where this tax statement and evaluation notes was out in the same thing. That saves the county 35,000 or so. But it can be a little confusing. So the tax statements based on, you know, it's a pay 23, but based on values in 2022. And they're, they're trying to set values for the next year. So there's a little bit of number of years you're looking at numbers there, so.
Right, and make sure when, when the taxpayers open the envelope, it's, it has both statements in there. So I think ours are purple, the value notices are purple and the, and the tax statements were pink this year. So we try to color code them so when they call in, we can say, are you looking at the pink one or the purple one? Because a lot of times there's confusion if they're looking at the tax statement, it's got last year's assessed value. And then they, you know, a lot of different questions come about that too, so.
Okay.
But Randy's right, it's, it's been a great cost savings. I know Jeff Johnson was a big proponent of trying to get those mailed in the same envelope. And it's, yeah, it's been successful.
Randy, you, it was nice to have that information sent out. I'm just wondering about phone calls. Have you had a good number of phone calls to your office?
Yeah, so they just went out at the end of last week. People maybe started seeing them on Saturday and then this week, yeah, there's been a fair amount.
And I don't know about other commissioners. I got a couple of phone calls and I got Correll Church with a couple too as well. I don't know if you folks have had any.
I just, Mr. Chair, just wanted to bring up or ask if we're at Homestead exemption, is that, if anyone knows legislatively if that's.
It is moving through the legislature, so I think it has a good chance of passing. So they're going to increase that and also they're looking at increasing the property tax refund. And then I think, you know, hopefully also county program aid, all those three should help keep, you know, taxes in check in the future, so.
Was it a tier limit?
Yeah, additional to that, so agricultural properties break at a certain value to the higher tier rate. They are talking about expanding that up, obviously with the increase in egg market the last two years as well. So hopefully that goes through.
Is that still at 1.89?
Yeah, yep, exactly. It was like 1, 1,890,000. I don't know what number, originally I thought they were talking about 2.5 million is what they were talking about, so.
That typically shifts with the market, so.
Exactly.
It'd be nice if some other things like the Homestead exclusion would also shift with the market, but it, it hasn't yet. I don't know if that's been talked about with the legislature or not, but you would think a lot of things would be market driven, but.
Okay, with the increase on the egg, have we seen increases on the rental costs on egg property? Do you know where, where that might be?
Yeah, we don't track that rental stuff. It's not something that assessors typically track. But I know the University of Minnesota does their study on that and they're, I think they tend to lag about a year behind. I haven't seen their numbers, but I'm assuming it is, yeah, just from what we hear, when our appraisers are in the field and what we hear is rent's definitely up as well, yep.
Commissioner Notch, what's the coffee shop?
Yeah, rent, you know, normally it was on the western part of the county, you know, you'd see those 200 plus.
Yeah.
And it's just slowly moving this way because it's it's just the nature of the beast. You know, commodity prices are high and there's competition for land. And and I think one of the issues we're seeing is when you have, you know, maybe a dozen very large farms. You know, they have the capacity to kind of bump those rental rates a little higher if they want to, you know, basically get it. So it, it's kind of a disadvantage for the smaller farmers because they, or younger ones, because they, they can't afford to pay that. You know, because either they're just getting into it or they're, or they're too small and they can't justify paying those types of prices.
Commissioner Bertram, your coffee.
Mr. Chair, it's not the coffee shops. You gotta worry about it. It's other locations that they certainly calls are coming and we all know this is going to happen. You might not be getting the calls, but obviously we do and will and get stopped. And and I think the general public knows by and large that when you see a neighbor's house sell for two hundred fifty thousand, when you know it's worth two hundred and they sell it quick, you know, there's going to be problems. I mean, I had a neighbor that, he was, he thought three twenty five was too much and ended up, it sold for four hundred. I got in a bidding war. Well, I told the neighbor, God bless you, you know, good for you, but I said, it's going to hurt us, you know. The fact of the matter is we're not going to change that, but property taxes to me were never, I, I never perceived property taxes being the most the best way to do it. Because if you have a five hundred thousand dollar house or if you have a two hundred fifty thousand dollar house, it costs so much to plow the snow to, if you're in the city limits, curb, you know, water, sewer. Just because you have a more expensive house doesn't mean it costs more for the services, but it is the nature of the beast. We're not going to change that, but it does bite people on fixed incomes, you know, and even the farmland. And then what, who it really hurts is, as I said, we have a century farm. I'm never selling it. Boys are never selling it. Well, that value of that land does not help us. It hurts us because we pay more taxes, again, on the same services and same thing with lake property or you know, homes or I lived in the same house since nineteen eighty five. So I'm not buying and selling and but again, that's just the nature of the beast and you, you're doing, we're doing what we have to do. It's state law. You have to assess it based on the value. And of course, years ago, people sold farmland, especially back in the eighties, I remember, and I was involved with that. And then they sold the gutter cleaner and, you know, the silo and loader and a bunch of stuff with it. Well, that made the land price higher. Well, then the state and I was a big push that separated that, you know, that you didn't include those personal items in the land price because it severely inflated the value and it really wasn't the land or the property.
And that's a big thing that when, when we call on those sales, that's a big thing that we talk about is, you know, the values on all the personal property and things like that. So we really try and track, get to the bottom of that. I was going to mention too, that we do have our sales layer out on the county website again. If you go out to the county website, there's a maps link. Just click on that and then go down. I think it's called properties. Us, property sales.
Property sales, yeah.
Yeah. So it's, it's, the, the public really likes to be able to go out and look at that. And it brings more transparency to our, what we do, you know, and they can go see and track all the ag, commercial, residential, whatever they want to look at. It's all out there and they can see the sales prices and actually has a link to the department revenue certificate, real estate value. They can go right out and look at that and get all the info that, that they need to make their determination on, you know, sale prices and things like that. So.
Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, really quickly, I know we want to go to our break, but I've definitely been hearing the, the, the hope and the almost dismay that the legislature didn't act last year and hasn't acted yet, knowing that taxes are usually one of the last things, but let's face it, if they had done what they should have done last year, we would have had a lower levy even, et cetera. And then so appreciate always the talking points because, you know, there are people who clearly had valuations that were under what they probably could have gotten for a while. And then some are kind of crazy right now. I believe I've mentioned this before, but I'm going to say it again because it's a good example. Senior widow in Northwest St. Cloud, whose property taxes have doubled this year. And she's like, how the heck am I supposed to stay in here? And recognizing that, Lee, you're pretty good at reminding us that what goes around comes around. And so that, that it just makes it hard still when you're trying to pay it out. So I doubt any of our great legislative friends are listening right this second, but they need to get that done.
That's a good point you made too about the tax shift with, you know, like I showed commercials been really flat, but residential's, you know, gone up a lot. So they're taking more of that, that's a piece of the pie basically of, of taxation. And now with agricultural moving a little bit more the other way, they might take on a little bit of that in the coming year. So and again, you know, back, at, at the time the market crashed back in oh eight, oh nine, commercial didn't, didn't track as, as fast as residential. So they were taking on some of the burden. So perfect example, you know, like you said, what goes around comes around. It's, it's constantly moving and it's just the nature of the beast. So.
It's, it's interesting that you, you bring that up because I had a call yesterday too. And the person said, are Stearns County coffers just like overflowing with money with all these property tags? You know, increase. And I said, well, no, no. I said, the levy set, it's just a shift from commercial or ag, you know, now to residential. And they're like, oh, well, good. I was hoping it wasn't the counties just awashing money, you know, and not knowing what to do with it. But.
And on that point, Mr. Chairman, people oftentimes forget it. It is a city. It is a school district, city or township. It is a school district and it is the county. In Paines, all our taxes went up five hundred bucks. Obviously the county taxes, and we all know we don't have a taxing problem as much as we do a spending problem. You keep passing excess levy referendums in school districts. You keep, you know, raising your taxes in local communities. It's, we're a third of it, you know, so we can certainly, and we, I believe we do do our part, but we're only a third of it.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, to that, that, and I, you know, City of St. Cloud went up a lot. And that gets to be hard, especially too, for the people who live there as opposed to the people in the rest of our area for us to hate saying, okay, here's who you need to call, but here's who you need to call. And to your point, Commissioner Bertram, here's what we've tried to do. I think it's probably also worth saying just the amount of shift from the state to us because we are a, a county administered state. The amount of, of things, including commitments among others, that are very expensive and really should be borne statewide through the state purses through property taxes. So that's the other thing that's kind of a frustrating piece.
Yeah. And inflation in general is a big driver and all of it. So, yeah.
Well, if you convince about St. Cloud, they're just say Sartell minus twenty, over twenty percent. And if we had Commissioner Mergen here yet, he would say, you know, we've been misled because the headline in Sartell was there would be not an increase in the tax rate. Well, there wasn't, but obviously the taxes are up twenty percent. So.
Wasn't a difference either in the right, right?
Anything else? Otherwise we'll take that long awaited break.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Thanks.
Up, we're back on. Okay. We're back from our recess and I hope everybody enjoyed the playground. We're next moving on to environmental services.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Mark Lateral, Environmental Services. I'm here this morning to address item G on the agenda with the board. The two items there and then the two additional items that got relocated from prior in the meeting. So I'll begin on item G one. This, the first item was an invite, you may recall, is an invitation from the board at the last meeting to come back today with a recap summary of our household hazardous waste facility. Kind of a program update. So I prepared about a sixteen slide PowerPoint to kind of go over with the board. It's just an informational presentation. So hopefully that'll give you a good feel of where we're at with things with the HHW facility. So to start at the beginning, for those that aren't aware, the Stearns County does have a household hazardous waste program. We do have a facility. The facility is located at thirty six oh one Fifth Street South in Wake Park. The contact number there is the two five seven eighty six oh five office number. Our hours of operation, we're there from Monday through Friday from eight to four fifteen PM. And then we are there the second and third Saturdays of the month from eight to noon. Who are we? We have five staff at office out of the facility. Paula Sexton is our office specialist. We have three HHW specialists, Ryan Thompson, Michael Rogers and Jacob Anderson. And then we do have our solid waste officer officing out of that, officing out of that location as well, Tim Oswald. So what happened in twenty two? Well, twenty two was a continuation of the three waste campaigns that had been established and been in place for a number of years. We have the Don't Toss Drop Off. We have the Reduce Your Waste campaign, and we also have the Sharp Smart campaign. Our focus was pushing the Don't Toss Drop Off, the emphasis on recycling. So we spent a large portion of our time emphasizing recycling, inviting the public to download our app, our app on their phones. Don't Toss Drop Off app, which we are in the process of rebranding to the Waste Wizard at this point. So we spent a lot of time doing that. Also, we did hold fifteen mobile events across the county and five out of county events last year. So a total of fifteen. Those were held through April through September. And those events were on top of our normal operating hours. In addition, we did join into the MPCA Fishing Tackle Recycle Exchange Program, the Get the Lead Out program. So folks can stop by the facility, drop off their unwanted lead fishing tackle. And we have a little complimentary courtesy non-led alternative fishing tackle package that the PCA has given us that we can hand out as a, as a kind of a thank you. So. We also had a community outreach night last June. We, we partnered with St. Cloud Rocks. We spent the night out in front of Joe Faber Field. Set up our tent. We were able to, we had the opportunity to meet and greet with the public as they were coming into the game, explain who we are and what we did. And then we were able to invite the folks to download the app and utilize that resource. It was a, it was a good event. We had a fun time doing it. We did have some novelty t-shirts that we did hand out to the kids as they were coming through. So we were able to see a lot of the yellow t-shirts in the crowd, which was kind of fun. And bonus, the rocks won that night. So it was a good night all the way around. Where are we headed in twenty three? Well, we're going to continue with the promotion of the three campaigns. In the past, they've been hosted and maintained on their own websites. We're going to start solidifying that back to the county website, bring all that information back to one point. Their individual domains will be redirected to the county website now. So that'll make it more efficient and easier to update the information. We are going to create an emphasis and this is going to step into a partner with our solid waste program a little bit, but we are going to emphasis. The solid waste is going to emphasize the source separated organics. That's one of the items in our solid waste management plan for twenty three. What we want to do is partner with that concept and start promoting the food yard backyard composting. There's a number of backyard composting bins that we're, we have at the facility that were actually from RAM, Recycling Association of Minnesota. We're looking at possibly finish buying those out. We want to create a win a bin kind of contest and, and then tie that to our app. So download, download the app, register to win a bin. And then we can have those drawings throughout the summer. We would also like to continue the possibility of an evaluating facility expansion to better serve the western portion of the county. So we'll look, we'll look to see if that's a possibility. Just in general notes, we do have our ag bulb collection going on right now. We, it has been since November. Over the winter, we, we have reached out to our ag communities. We go out, we pick up Over the winter, we, we have reached out to our egg communities. We go out, we pick up fluorescent bulbs from the farmers, swapping them out of their turkey barns, chicken barns, whatever they may have. We do have a minimum number of 50, but if, if there's an egg member out there that has a bunch of bulbs that want to have us come out and get them off their hands, we will do that. All they do is need to call us and set up an appointment and staff will collect those from them. We do have some advertising in motion, is what I'll call it. You may have seen the buses running around the city of St. Cloud for the last couple of years, half-green, promoting our Don't Toss Drop Off campaign. This year, we have updated those. They're going to start promoting the Waste Wizard app under our new branding. They're also going to, the other one is going to advertise or start speaking to the composting theme that we want to push out there. And then in the, you'll see in the rear of the buses, we do have our Reduce Our Waste Org, our Reduce Our Waste campaign and the Sharp Smart to bring that out there as well. And some generalities for our program. So the Stearns County facility is a regional, we are the regional program sponsor. We'll be speaking a little bit more to this in a little bit, but we do have an agreement with the state of Minnesota to operate a household hazardous waste program. As I said, we are the regional sponsor. We have participating counties that then partner with us. At the facility, we have five partners, Benton, Malax, Pope Douglas, Sherburne, and Wright Counties. And we do have the goal in mind with the, with the Pollution Control Agency to provide environmentally sound and safe management options for the program waste and encourage the reduction of reuse, recycling, and safe storage and management of those wastes. We do participate in the Paint Care program. That is the product stewardship legislation from 2013. Paint Care does promote, or does give us, reimburse us for processing the paints. It does give us about $100,000 a year in revenue on those reimbursements. It does provide us reusable collapsible crates, which are great because we no longer bulk paint at the facility. We're able to stack the cans directly in those crates. It saves us a ton of money on buying steel drums and a lot of monotonous labor of crushing and draining cans of paint. So that's been a really positive experience for us being part of that program. The HHW facility does participate in the VSQG program, which is the very small quantity generator program. Even though our facility is aimed at households, we do, through this program, have the opportunity to service businesses if they qualify for those standards under the VSQG. There is paperwork that needs to be involved. You need a waste generator ID. You have to meet the criteria. But if a company is out there and is interested in utilizing those services, again, I would just encourage them to give us a call at that 257-8605 number. Talk to Paula or one of the staff, and they can run them through those criteria, and we can certainly help them offload their waste, so. And lastly, we do try to maintain a Don't Toss Drop Off Facebook page. This, this kind of allows us to keep our messaging current. It allows us to post unexpected closures if they should occur, and also then allow staff to kind of throw through the, the reuse ideas, the repurposing concepts out there that people can share, so. Again, just to make the public aware, we do have a reuse store at the facility. So it's open and available. It's on a, it's first come, first served, and everything is free. The product is ever-changing, and so it's limited to the items that we get, but it, it changes and they disappear quickly. So a lot of times, we put several carts out there in a day, and by the end of the day, it's bare shelves again. So the public, it is well-used, but it does, it is limited to what we have, so. The HHW program does maintain, or we do operate a mobile unit. So you can see our picture of our rig. That's our mobile collection unit. We have the two vehicles, the two trailers, and then our setup, typical setup. The 2023 schedule has been set. We're going to do 14 events this year, nine of them in county, five again out county with our partner counties. That schedule should be showing up hopefully in the spring newsletter and then also be available on our website soon. We just finalized the Kimball one, I believe it was, or Kimball one last week, or Santiago one possibly. Just to give the board an idea, there are, there are some location keys when we host these mobile events. First thing is space. Our setup is roughly 100 by 200, so we need about 20,000 square feet to get what appears there set up. We need an impervious, impervious surface setup location. We can't operate them on dirt, so we, we want an asphalt surface to work off of. And then we need to be able to manage traffic, the traffic management abilities. We don't want to be blocking roads, cars down the shoulder, that kind of thing. So we want to be able to have an inflow and outflow. Obviously, then we need approval of the, of the property owner to utilize that site, and then also partnering with the communities and their planners and having that cooperation with the communities to get these events set. Because not only, it's a lot of times, it's not just us showing up and we're hosting an event here, but it's in conjunction with a cleanup days for a community and such. So there's a little bit of back and forth with those to get those established. Speaking of the, the 14 events, here are the locations of the nine in-county events. So you'll see we'll be in Sox Center, Melrose, Albany, we'll be up in Holding Ford, we'll be in Greenwald, Painesville, Eden Valley, Richmond, and Kimball this year. Those are set. On alternate years, we do, do runs to St. Stephen, Belgrade, Bruton, Padua, and St. Nicholas. So we do try to do those every other year. Participation numbers are lower there. That's why we run those on an alternate year schedule, so. You heard me speak earlier of our, our mobile app that we've been encouraging everyone to download. Just some statistics, and from this point, the rest of the presentation will be more statistical, but the Waste Wizard, I, I wanted to bring this out because since we began promoting the app, we've had over 2,000 downloads of that app. We've had over 50,000 materials searched on that. There is a component for youth to have a game. It's called Wasteland. So almost, you know, 1,900 games by kids have been played on that app. So it's, 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 it's a good, it's a very useful tool, actually. But what was more interesting, that widget is also on our county website. When I checked the hits on the widget on the website, there's over 41,000 hits on that, on that hit, on the widget for the website. So I thought that was some good numbers to share forward. Now, in '22, here's, here's where we just kind of gets into more of the nuts and bolts of statistics. I know Commissioner Natchey would ask for some data numbers. So looking at, there are 22 numbers in total, and I'm going to work these from top left to bottom right, going across and down. But the first, the first graph up there shows that we had 931 participants in our mobile units, our mobile collection events last year. We had 9,300 people visit the facility over the year, and we've processed our disposal, actually, we disposed of almost 550,000 pounds of waste. That averages out to about 59 pounds of waste per vehicle or per, per participant. We've disposed of almost 26,000 light bulbs, almost 34,000 gallons of latex paint, almost 78,000 pounds of flammable products, 15,000 pounds of corrosives, and about 42,600 pounds of pesticides last year, so. Taking that a step further and comparison, comparing '22 to previous years, here's kind of a graph with some 10-year numbers. The numbers I want to point out are kind of in that last year, that 10-year totals. Over, over since 2013, we've had over 12,000 people come through our mobile events. We've had 87,000 people come through our, our HHW facility, and staff have processed or disposed of over 4.6 million pounds of waste at the facility. You can continue to see the breakdown. 380,000 light bulbs, 253,000 gallons of latex paint, 606,000 pounds of flammable products, 152,000 pounds of corrosives, and 346, almost 347,000 pounds of pesticides have been processed and disposed of. So staff stay busy, so. Looking at that, not just the statistics on the products themselves, looking at pulling numbers from the state retract system, reporting system, you can see the number, the usage numbers per year for the last six years. It breaks down by county. Obviously, most, mostly utilized by Stearns residents, but Benton coming in, and then Sherburne, Malax, Wright, and others. So we do see our participating county sending people there. Then the bottom chart will show kind of the days of the week and the, and the car totals coming through the drive-through per, by day of the week. Mondays come out slightly ahead of any other day of the week as far as usage, followed by Fridays. So in 2019, we did add that second Saturday, but you can see the numbers really don't double. They aren't, Saturdays aren't exactly utilized in the fashion we thought they may be, so. The next slide just shows some statistics on the business drop-offs. We had 49 appointments last year coming from businesses. You can see the, the amounts of waste that we processed through those appointments. So, so, you know, the waste that's also being disposed of from them is, is substantial. The next two slides then just kind of give a comparison, our facility against the other facilities in the state. What I, what I found out is we had, there are 38 HHW facilities in the state, and we broke that down into 15 standalone facilities, or what I'm going to call standalone, like, like Stearns County, where it's just the facility. And then there's 23 that operate out of a combined location, whether it's attached to a MRF, a landfill, a something else that, that's run. So looking at that and utilizing the participation numbers of people coming to those facilities, we broke out the top 12. Stearns comes in at number seven as far as participation rates. We come in number three in facilities in the greater, or the greater Minnesota. So the other ones are metro. And taking that one step further and breaking out the, the top 12, again, from top left to bottom right, we, we set the comparison on hours of operation, the total hours, annual hours that they're operated, user partition, the total amount, total waste managed, which is different from the previous numbers that I gave. Total waste managed is actually, includes the, the waste that's been disposed, disposed of, but it also includes the waste that we sent through the reuse store to give us a total number. And then the number of FTEs that run those programs, so. Maybe I went through that a little quicker than I anticipated, but that's kind of what I had put together for a recap. If there's questions, I can try to address those. Mr. Chair?
Okay. I've got a bunch, but I'll let my colleagues go first.
I just had a quick one. I see on the, with the 49 appointments, those compressed gas cylinders? Are, do they take those little green ones?
The little propane?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll take those.
Okay. Because you always hear people don't know where to go with them.
All the little one-pounders. Yeah, we'll take those. Actually, we, I believe those are offloaded to a facility over in Wyoming. Staff run those over and deliver those.
Thanks.
I was just curious, this is actually near the beginning of your presentation. Clearly, you're, you're, we've got the apps and giving people information about composting, et cetera. What, what efforts are being done with apartments or seniors that maybe, so this is up clearly more in some of our either small cities or, you know, the St. Cloud area, et cetera. We've got a lot of people who live in apartments or in senior living that don't really have the ability to compost. Are we, is there anything being done with apartments or any of the senior facilities?
Right. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Clark, that, your question gears more towards the solid waste program, but, but with that, I think the work that Tim Oswald has been doing, not only through Tri-County, but within our solid waste program, we, the organics pilot that was done last year, the possible ramp-up of that coming in the future for future discussions. But I know he had been in discussion with, like, the city of St. Cloud, possibly at, offering potential drop locations. Only a handful at first because there's worry about contamination, but kind of training the public on what can be put in there, allowing them the opportunity to dispose of organic waste like that in, in a drop setting.
Right. And, and Mr. Chair, I, yes, obviously, I mean, I am excited about the possibilities. We've got a number of communities, small and big, around the state that are doing those things. And what we thought about PFAS originally is different than, so it's probably not the holdup that we once thought it was. But what I was specifically talking about is, and part of the presentation was helping people think about how they're composting their own waste at their homes and about the bins. I'm just curious if there's anything being done like that with apartments, and I think the answer is probably based on what you just said.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mark, first of all, thank you for taking this on. It's been a concern of mine for a number of years because, you know, I think we've got chemicals out there that are ending up in the wrong place, and we certainly can do much more to improve what we're doing. And I was just concerned about some of the numbers. For example, with that mobile unit, you know, less than 1,000 participating when we go out to the mobile sites, you know, that's a considerable investment we must have in that truck that, you know, that I would imagine that the trailer and the truck there is not a, a cheap entity or, you know, an inexpensive entity. I, I would, I would hope when people are going to these mobile events, you know, the yard cleanups or community cleanups, that they would know, hey, we want your paint, we want your tripentine, we want your fertilizer bag that's half-empty and, but it's just not happening. It doesn't seem to, to be happening. I, I, I don't know why, you know, why we're not getting what we should be getting, because I would think that people want to recycle, that people want to keep that stuff out, out of, out of the trash. Likewise, I, I was really, I look at those numbers on the Saturday, but I realized, of course, they're half-days, and then there's only two of them. So you would expect those numbers to be less than the other days of the week. But I would think that Saturday would be a day that, that people would show up with their materials because, you know, they have time, whereas if they're at school, they're at work, they're whatever, that, you know, those hours are not convenient, especially if we're pulling from other counties, pulling from Benton County, Sherburne County, Morrison County to, to drop these things off, that even Malax County, I think, we're a drop-off for, are we not for Malax as well?
We are, Malax. Morrison's not in our group. However, I will point out, you'll see in the, the one slide I did show, that we did list another category. We don't turn people away. I mean, we have our, we have our program partners that, that we have agreements with. Someone shows up from someone outside of that, we don't say, sorry, you're not one of the special five. We'll take your waste because you're here, and we're going to do the right thing and recycle it. So we don't turn those folks away. We do, we do service them.
Yeah. Yeah. One thing that sounds encouraging is you talked about the crates, and I, you know, and I'm thinking too, looking forward, is there something we can do with the crates so that we would maybe have crates at, and, and Commissioner Lenzmeyer alluded to this a few meetings ago. You know, at another location, like at a public works, that, you know, the city has, you can drop off at City Hall Saturday mornings, and the public works people, you know, they have somebody there, or Boy Scouts, or Lions, or somebody's there. And, you know, then they go ahead and you deposit those chemicals in the crate, and then they put it in their restricted area, then, you know, after the, after the morning. And we, you know, we deliver it then out there. But my general thought is that we, we've got people that want to participate. They know that it's wrong to just put that in the dumpster, to put that into the, the trash, or even just to dump it in the backyard. But we, we've got to make it more easy for them to, to get it there. And, and, and so I'm, I'm searching at, you know, how can we do that? How can we make that possible? Yeah. There was one other thing I was thinking about here. The, oh, the, the other facility you talked about, the potential of opening another one on the west side. And I just think about if we were to open another one on the west side, you know, the cost of doing that, to have another location, of having a specific location, and then the hours of, of operation, you know, how much would that actually cost us as far as the? hours of, of operation, you know, how much would that actually cost us as far as the number of increased donations or pickups we would have? I don't know how cost-effective that would be, opposed to maybe taking another approach to that.
Mr. Chair, the, the original concept with a potential western Stearns County location wasn't another full-blown facility like we have in Wade Park. What we were, what our original concept was, is, I liken it to when you go camping, you have a tent, right? When you go to a state park, you can get a camping cabin. Well, camping cabin is nothing really more than a hard-sided tent, right? So using that analogy, what, what we started throwing around originally was, was a concept of a hard-sided tent out in western Stearns County where we won't necessarily set up a mobile collection, but it would be run more like a mobile collection, but it would be a point of reference that the residents on there would know, the location. We would be able to go to, have a building with limited safeguards needed, and we'd have to work with the agency to figure out exactly what those minimums were. But where we could, we could do collections, we could be out of the weather, we could, you know, all those things. We could maybe get there, whether it be once a week or once every other week on a designated day and timeframe, in addition to operating the facility here. Now, keep in mind, I have three staff, full-time staff that does all this work. So whatever, whatever new concepts, whatever new ideas, whatever we bring forward, staffing becomes an issue. More, we're going to need more hands to, to do these things, to be just frank.
And, and, and that's where I was wondering, as, as far as you taking a look at that type of cost, is, is that, you know, are there options? You know, I, I know we got students at, at the universities, at the universities, I know that are looking for a Saturday opportunity to maybe make some cash. And if they could get a half a day, I mean, some people would jump at that.
Mr. Chair, you're right. There's probably a number of people that'd be interested to help serve in that capacity. The problem comes down to the training that's needed. I've heard you speak prior about, you know, alternate location drop sites, right? Well, that becomes a collection, collection point. Now, that needs to be operated and maintained more like our collection facility is, not just a drop box with a guy from Public Works keeping an eye on it for us. I did, hearing you speak to that, I did reach out to Jennifer Volkman at the MPCA. I did ask her for some information on how we, to address those. I, I've also heard you talk about potential more collections at county fairs, sites. And I, and I asked her to address those and speak to those items. What are the possibilities of that? What are the drawbacks? What would be allowed by the agency? What wouldn't be allowed by the agency? Because we have to do comply with the standards for the collection on that, so.
And Mark, I appreciate you doing that because, because I think we, we can do better and I'm glad you're addressing those. So let's take a look at what, what comes back. You know, again, everybody paints that bedroom, everybody paints, you know, a shed or whatever, and they've got that half a can left. And it's better if we bring it back instead of throwing it into that dumpster. So.
Mr. Chairman, I, I was thinking about historically, there was a senior citizen in Painesville, Gladys Cetrick, when Jerry Johnson was the director of the Tri-County Waste Commission. And she was saying, there's no place to take this stuff for our senior population, getting Commissioner Park, Clark's point. And she just suggested at the time, the highway department, if they could get a, you know, a pickup, lined, you know, lined pickup, and just collect the stuff and then bring it to a center. That was before the facility, that was before the mobile unit. And Jerry, to his credit, at that point, took a, you know, a $10,000 idea and made it into a $200,000 idea with mobile unit, which is great. You know, that, that certainly served its purpose. And I remember starting cleanups where people, at first, it was hard to get the hazardous waste unit to come to the cleanups. And they would do them like on a Thursday afternoon at the Catholic cemetery or the parking lot in Painesville. And maybe got, I don't know, fifty people at best because at ten o'clock on a Thursday, people weren't going to be there. Well, then we got them to start joining us at the cleanups. And you could just see the difference because when people come to the cleanups, they've got a washer, dryer, they've got some garbage, they've got tires, and then they'd have that box of hazardous material. And if the mobile unit wasn't there, we'd take everything, the volunteers and everything, and then we'd shut the trunk and we all looked at each other as they drove out of the parking lot, saying, where do you think that's going to end up? You know, if you make it convenient, and now you have partnered with a lot of those cleanups, and that's great because that's where the people are bringing the stuff that they want to get rid of. I was surprised there only were nine events in the county, but that's certainly good. And it isn't something, my perception of this is, it's not something that people do every month or every week. A lot of times, it is a once, an annual thing. And the cleanups is where the biggest thing is, not every town's got a cleanup. But that is the time, in my opinion, to be there. So that's good. But if you look at the other facilities, you know, evening hours, more weekends, again, people were a regional center, they come to Millsfleet, they come out that direction, they're going to be more apt to, to stop. But if you look, I was shocked that the average pounds, I mean, which is maybe fifty pounds, you know, average, but yet with the number of participants, and you look at, it's four point eight, four point six million pounds of material. So when you look at per person, you think fifty pounds, that's not a lot, but boy, it sure adds up in a hurry, doesn't it? And again, the paints are the, in my opinion, the minimum issues. It's these more hazardous waste types that are out there that people don't know. But I agree with Commissioner Persky, I don't know that we need a physical structure. If we did more use of the mobile unit and then did it, even if you did it every other year and did that more regionally, there are some spots, and you said you do Bruton every other year and those kinds of, but that fills in that. But being at the fair, the Rock scheme is great, being at high, highly attended events. What was the one idea you had, Joe, it's something, oh, the fair, I think, was the idea that if people would get into that, they'd know that, okay, once a year, they're going to be set up across the road from the fair or someplace or whatever. When you do the staffing, Mark, like when you show up at these community cleanups, there's usually five, six people then, who, is that other department people or who, who are those people?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, typically on a collection, we send out two trained staff, sometimes three, depending on, on the size of the, the event. But otherwise, we rely on the community to provide volunteers. And then those volunteers are then under the direction of our trained staff. So we have a identified safety officer being one of our full haswapper trained staff, secondary person being there to help guide staff. There's usually some community members then that take care of the survey out front as cars are bringing, coming in. Maybe some people help offload. There may be an individual that gets assigned, you know, lightbulb packing duty and kind of showing how that happens and, and from there. But we do rely on the community somewhat for, for help.
Well, that's, that's great. That will help your staffing because I know fire departments have told, and a couple of the communities that we do cleanups on are very happy to help do that, you know, if they would be open to doing that. So that's a way that we could maybe expand that. But it's a good, thanks for the report. I think it's helpful for everybody.
If I could just make one more point, Mr. Chair. I do hear the hours of operation concerns. If you look at that last graph chart of all the twelve comparisons, days of the week and operating, when you look at the total hours of annual hours available, we do come in third in the state of total hours available to the residents. So, you know, statewide, we, we, comparing to the other facilities, we do have our doors open quite a bit, so.
And Mr. Chairman, we're all competitive, so we'd like to be number one if we can. So let's, let's work together.
Well, some of those we won't get to, just because of the dynamics of, of where we are.
Brandy's with us.
Okay. I guess, I, I would be interested in seeing perhaps those collection sites that are open all day, every Saturday, and see if that becomes their number one day. If, if, if it's not, then I would be surprised. So if, if we do have a collection that is opened every Saturday, all, you know, from eight to four or whatever, I would like to see a comparison with, with their behaviors the rest of the week and see if then that does actually show that if we were available on a Saturday, I have regular hours, that it would actually produce the most. So if we could take a look at that.
We could try to track down some statistics if we could.
I would think, you know, some of the other counties have that, those statistics to look at.
I, I was going to say, if you, you know, those ones that you showed on the slide before, you could look at the ones that are open Saturday all day and contact them and they could probably tell you.
Yep.
And Mr. Chair, along those lines, I mean, we're talking about two half-days per month as opposed to four or five all-days comparison. So I actually thought those numbers were pretty good. And recognizing that our board is about what and why, hopefully you're keeping on hearing our what and why is, we, we would like to have this be done in a way and that meets people's needs, meets them where they're at and what their lives are like. And if that means modifying hours, then, you know, if you need something else from us, let us know. But let's figure out how to make this easy. I, I've used it, I've been very thankful about paint, among other things. But it is hard to remember when, if it's, you know, for me, I could be thinking about my going out to a meeting at the service center. Oh, yeah, they're open, let's get the, my pesticides together. But for a lot of people, that's not how their days work. They're already at work or they have a harder time getting places. I was actually thinking in addition, again, we're just brainstorming here, so thank you for tolerating our brainstorming. But community festivals, you know, are there opportunities, recognizing you've got a lot of training, you know, what else can we do there? So I think, hopefully you're hearing, thank you, and how can we even get to, to, to more people in a way that really works for them?
Some of those larger community events, if, if we were ever to get to utilizing those events, the real safety factor comes into maybe paring down the waste that's allowed to be brought. Maybe it's just a paint collection. Because lord knows, somebody shows up with the box of dynamite from grandpa's garage in a, at a fair site. Yeah. Likelihood, slim and none, but possibly we have people show up with it at the facility. So after they've bounced it around in their truck, the trunk, you know? So, you know, so, so some of those factors come into play.
Right. And, and, and that was my broadcast suggestion is about the paint because that's not so toxic, but it, yet it, it adds up when you take a look at it. And you could have, all eighty-seven counties could be participating and everybody would know, oh, you're going to the fair, here, take this along with you. And just looking at the numbers, thirty-five thousand people at the Stearns County Fair, if we got one in twenty to do that, we'd have over seventeen hundred people participating. So I mean, that, those numbers would add up. Yeah. Okay, good.
Okay. All right. Moving on to item G2 then. Again, this was an item that was originally brought forth on, to the board on the seventh. It was pulled from the consent agenda and then some discussion had ultimately tabled. This was the request to enter in the renewal agreement with the Pollution Control Agency to operate the HHW facility. There were a number of questions that were posed. Continuing with my slideshow theme here, I did take and get, have about seven slides to answer some of those questions that I heard asked. They were in the packet. So I'll just run through those when hopefully I can address the concerns that were raised. So my first slide is really just a point of clarification. This agreement that we're going to discuss, as I said earlier, Stearns County has two programs. We have a solid waste program. Solid waste deals with garbage, municipal solid waste, construction demolition, industrial solid waste, recycling, solid waste haulers, transfer stations, landfills. That's our solid waste program. We have a household hazardous waste program, which deals with then the chemicals, the light bulbs, the paints and stains and such, the, the mobile unit, the facility. This agreement that we're speaking of now strictly deals and, and impacts the HHW program, not the solid waste program. So I just wanted to point that out for clarity. The first question I heard, I think Mr. Commissioner Bertram, he raised, was what are the main differences in the contract? Well, in the twenty eighteen, or the, yeah, the twenty eighteen contract, it was really two contracts in one. It was the contract to operate the facility, but then they also put in the paint care contract within, within that, created one large one. So when you look at the eighteen versus the twenty-three version, the paint care has been removed. This now, the twenty-three version of the contract is really just more operated as a grant agreement covering the program operation and reimbursement. The paint care agreement, just to, just to touch on that for a moment, the paint care agreement is really an agreement between an industry group and the HHW programs for reimbursement costs specifically related to the work performed by the counties related to paint care products. That's the qualifying oil and latex paints, okay? That's part of that product stewardship program and legislation from twenty thirteen. The only other real difference I could find in reading through the two contracts side by side last week, there was a reduction from a five percent to a three percent allowance in how you account for waste that's been abandoned as a household participation number. So they, they reduced that slightly. Quite frankly, it won't impact our, our program, so.
Mr. Chairman, Mark, if the cost of disposing this stuff goes up, does that get accounted for in this agreement, you know?
No.
Does it?
No. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, disposal costs, that is, you know, a cost we bear to a program. I, I'll get into finances and how that's broken out here in a couple of slides so you can, you'll get a better idea what this actually provides to us and to our partners. So, but the, the overall cost of disposing waste is just part of our normal HHW budget, The next, next slide, or the next question I heard was, how does this program really work, right? Or this agreement really work, excuse me? The prior agreement was entitled to JPA, a joint powers agreement, but now they're really re-titling this as a grant agreement. They've kind of backed off on the, on the language. And it's very similar to the score agreements in regards to, and it's agreement to transfer money ultimately. The, the agreement establishes a regional program, Stearns County, with, creates a regional program, and in within that regional program, there's a regional sponsor, and that's, that's what our title is, we're the regional sponsor. We do have then again, participating counties that sign in with agreements with a regional sponsor to participate in the program. As I mentioned earlier, we have Benton, Malax, Pope Douglas, Sherburne and Wright counties as our participating counties within our regional program. Overall, in the state, there are twenty-two regional programs. It's broken out, there are seven metro and fifteen in greater Minnesota. And then researching how these groups were compiled, it was, it's really, what I was, was indicated to me, it's really through mutual local discussions and somewhat based on the original programs that were in place when it was first compiled, like Tri-County was in place, Duluth was in place, so they became a kind of a clear regional program for the other partners to, to pair in with. So that's kind of how they were originally established. Looking forward further on the agreement on how this works then, as Stearns being the regional, the program sponsor, we agreed then to process package and ship the waste that we receive and fulfill the sponsored duties. So one, a couple of the, a couple of the duties is that we are ultimately the recipient of the full stipend. So the state has about $600,000 a year set aside to supplement this. Our region gets about $100,000 of that, so we take about a sixth of the pot just here locally. And then we break that $100,000 out and we send out stipends to our partnering counties based on their household participation. We also then have a reporting requirement. Each, each county or each participant has a reporting county, a reporting requirement to the state, excuse me. And then we on top of that have a regional reporting. Once that's done, we, Ryan grabs reports from all of our partners, compiles them into a regional report and files that as well. So. The last item there then, this agreement does allow us to get into secondary agreements for the facility and for the mobile units, for the collections throughout a county. The facility reimbursement rates are set by the fee schedule. We bill back each of our participating counties $30 per car that comes through our facility. We bill that back monthly and then to the, to our partner counties. So and that's how their costs of disposal are covered. With the mobile unit, we do have rates that are set by the fee schedule again for the equipment and labor. And then the agreement spells out that the state contract weight for disposal costs, it's two times that rate is what they pay for disposal on that, so. Another question I heard is, how does this agreement impact our program? Well, it, it, it does influence our program in a number of ways. First, it's, it's monetary. Like I said, there's $600,000 on an annual basis sold to the fifteen greater Minnesota regional programs. The seven metro counties don't get funded, the, the outstate ones do. So I said, we get, we get about $100,000. This contract provides indemnification and liability coverage for the waste ships. It gives us access to the state contracts, allowing us to use Veolia and recycling technologies at Fender to ship our waste through. It provides contract pricing for incurred waste disposal costs. We run about a hundred, or three hundred, $350,000 a year in disposal costs at our facility to get rid of the waste that we process. to get rid of the waste that we process.
Mark, I was gonna ask this question later, but that's there's kind of a quandary here. Because we want to have people to bring it in and we get funding before they bring it in. But then we also have costs when it when it goes out. And I and I don't want it to look like, gosh, we're, we really don't want people to bring it in because it's going to cost us all this money to get get rid of this. You know, somehow that's a little bit discouraging, thinking that the more we bring in, the more it's going to cost us. But the reality is, we want to bring that in because we don't want it to end up in the environment.
Correct. But just, I, I, Mr. Chair, I agree. It's kind of the nature of the beast. I mean, we want to process and do what's right with the chemicals, keep it out of the environment. There is a cost to it. It's it's just a realistic look at what it costs for us to run the facility.
Right.
Yeah. It's not. It's not meant to be a downer. Yeah, or or a negative to stop people from coming. That's not the intent at all. It's just to clearly lay out that we have a cost in this 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 agreement that we have, even though it's it's somewhat minimal in in value that we get reimbursed, the reimbursement we do get does help offset the costs of the program.
Absolutely. And 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 I don't want to to think that we're not going to be doing what's right just because it's going to cost us a little more money.
Well, like I said before, we don't turn away nonpartner counties. We do what's right. So. Continuing on with just this how the influences, you know, state contracting price for buying some supplies. It allows us to have the small quantity generator businesses come. We can ship their waste under the indemnification of the MPCA. That's a benefit. It allows Benin waste to be reimbursed for. It helps with our standard operating procedures. It helps provide training to staff and then it also reduces the overall risk to Stearns County being in this agreement. What it doesn't do, it doesn't influence our our internal program policies and procedures. It doesn't influence hours of operation or doesn't dictate the number of staff. It doesn't dictate how we operate our mobile units. So those are not part of the equation. So. Moving on, sorry. Another concern I had is what do what do our partners say? So I reached out to each one of our partners. I provided quotes. You can read those. If you want me to read them, I will. But nuts and bolts of it is everybody's satisfied with how it's been run and they say, keep it going. So checking in with our partners, it seems to be an appreciated item to them. So. Oops, sorry, backwards. So the next question I heard is what if the what if the program changes? How does that impact our partner counties? While not signing the agreement, we'd lose our indemnification and other benefits I just kind of went through. We'd lose the hundred thousand dollar payment. So that affects not only us, but it affects our partners. And then if we would choose not to sign or enter into this renewal agreement, you know, Stearns County, we would venture our way. But our partner counties, if they could not realign it to another regional grouping, then they they're pretty much out of everything as well. At this point, most of the other regional agreements have been signed. So the likelihood of them joining another region is not that high either. So. Then I turn this last bullet on there. I would just, and it's an assumption and everybody be careful with assumptions. But it would only make sense to me that if we weren't in this agreement with the MPCA, given the fact that it provides liability and indemnification that we do. If we didn't have that coverage, I couldn't see the county continuing to want to take on full liability for all of our partner counties wastes as we package and process and ship them. So I don't know that we would want that liability. So that's what this this agreement will do for us. The last kind of the last couple of slides here are really the financials. So how does this work, right? So household participation counts are kept at our facility through the mobile event particip at the facility and through our mobile events that we host at other out of county locations. So we track those numbers. We provide those numbers to Benton, Malax and Sherburne. Sherburne also has Veolia, does some mobile events for them. They track those participation numbers. Wright County and Pope Douglas, they track their own numbers at their facilities. Those household participation numbers all get entered into the state system. The state system then takes the household, participating household numbers, and they come up with a base funding amount. And then there's there's the the two equations. There's the base funding and then there's the supplemental funding. And when you work it through that magical equation, they come out to, you know, certain dollar amounts based on the household participations of each county each year. So looking at that, like I said, our program, we we get about a hundred thousand dollars of the overall pot. You can see from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty two, it kind of shows that roughly that hundred thousand dollar mark. You can see the breakout between the counties. In twenty twenty two, our program did take in twenty seven, three sixty six. Ben had seven, Pope Douglas had almost thirty one thousand, Sherburne ten, Wright twenty three thousand, and Malax County had four thousand dollars, kind of in the breakout. You can see in the other charts below that are the breakouts for the prior years. It does give the, some of them show the participation numbers and then the value they put to those participation numbers. Like in twenty two, it shows the two dollars and seventy nine cents per household. And then as they run that through, that math generates the values. So. That's kind of the financials of the of it. I hope I've addressed the questions the board had.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I guess I would request that the item be brought off the table for further discussion. And if so, authorize the renewal of the agreement and authorize Randy to get that signed and in place for us.
I'll make that motion to remove the item from the table, I think is the proper way to do that.
Okay.
I'll move approval.
Okay.
Do we approve it or bring it off?
Well, I think you needed to approve, take it off the table. Do you want to make the motion to approve it as well? Then I'll just second if you're doing that.
Okay, we got a motion to remove the item off the table and to move the item forward. Any discussion before we start our discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're back on.
Thank you.
Anybody want to start with the with?
The only recognition again is this is classic government, forty pages contract. I mean, unbelievable. If PCA would spend as much time helping us with our problems as they did, you know, creating these kind of contracts, we'd be in a lot better shape. So be it.
Well, Mark, you did a in-depth look at what we're looking at. Appreciate that information. I hope the other counties appreciate it as well. And again, from the practical standpoint on the previous issue, that, you know, let's do what we can to improve the collection of that waste material and do the responsible thing. So.
Sure.
Are there questions about it?
On that point, Mr. Chairman, we were thanked at the Tri County Waste Commission that we brought up because they said we didn't know this was going on. I mean, so it doesn't hurt to touch base with those partners once in a while and say, this is a little bit more because not everybody knows the details of this.
And likewise, they had just mentioned that they were encouraged to increase their recycling and reuse as well. They want they want us to be more active and more vibrant with our abilities to take things out of the environment.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I was just thinking you may have already done this. It might be worth sharing your PowerPoint with the other counties. A lot of good information in there. You spent a lot of time in it. They may even have some additional ideas to.
Yeah.
And Baton County was interested in the fair thing. You thought that was a great idea.
Yeah, I was gonna say Baton County, there's a lot of people that go through there.
Right. And I'm gonna maybe approach AMC about that whole thing. Again, just simply paint. And maybe you show up with a few cans and with a paintbrush. So who knows? I'll call the question then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The next.
I just want to interrupt. Dr. Williams, I think the people from the township are waiting in the hallway. They're standing out there. Just for their courtesy, you may want to let them know that we're not going to be done in five minutes.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
Well, what do we have to address today? Absolutely positively today. We can.
But I don't know.
Yeah, I'll do that. You still have number eleven from the consent and the other addition here.
We're gonna keep plowing through, but I think.
I don't want to.
To let them know that they're going to be standing there for a while.
Somebody usually does besides me.
Okay. All right.
All right. Mr. Chair, then the the last two items that I have, and I'll try to make them as brief as I can to keep you moving along. There was an item pulled from the consent agenda regarding a certificate of need. It was item number eleven. Certificate of need request for the Nobles County landfill. We in January received a request from Katie Swor from Stantec Engineering on behalf of Nobles County landfill. They are looking to do some repermitting with the MPCA. They requested a certificate of need verification. They asked for four thousand tons a year of commitment, basically from Stearns County, so that they can do their permitting going forward. This becomes, certificate of need requests are somewhat hard to deal with. You may require, remember the Morrison County one that we went through last year. They're difficult to because in the state of Minnesota, the tracking for waste goes to first point of tip, okay? Whether that's an incinerator like Pope Douglas, whether that's a transfer floor station, whether that's a landfill. That's where the waste gets recorded as being tipped. It doesn't necessarily record the final disposition location. Okay? So there aren't really good numbers as I start to go through this madness of trying to piece it all together and and verify if four thousand is a good number or not. What it all shakes out is it's hard. It's very hard to verify that number. I did reach out and speaking to Ms. Swor, she indicated that they believe the waste that comes to Nobles County landfill comes from the transfer stations located in Wilmer and in Alexandria, Minnesota. So I reached out to West Central Sanitation, to Taylor Williamson, had a brief email conversation back and forth with him, asking him if he can verify numbers that go to Nobles County. He gave me back numbers that I was able to find in the retrack reporting system for for those locations. Obviously, that's the first point of tip. They're in the state reporting system. I reached out to Paula at Tri County, said, hey, do you have any numbers? What do you have? She gave me some numbers, trying to compare those those two sets of numbers. They're not exact, but they're they're fairly similar similar in quantities. Looking at it then, I said, well, how do I verify it's going to Nobles County? I looked at the last three licensing applications that we received from West Central as a hauler because on there it indicates where the final location would be. Only in twenty twenty one was Nobles County listed as a disposition location, twenty two, then twenty three doesn't. So it's it's this, it's the inability to really confirm what the waste is. Now, the request is really them asking us, is that much of waste available to come to our landfill? Well, that's really out of our say because as a hauler collects the waste around Stearns County and dumps it on a tip floor somewhere, it gets co-mingled with other waste and it's really hard to track basically after that. But ultimately, after the after haulers have met the quota requirements to Pope Douglas, it's on that hauler to dispose of the waste. So I have no say whether that's available. We, I shouldn't say, I, Stearns County does not have any say in where that location disposal location is. It's up to that vendor then to decide where they're going to dispose of that waste. I don't know if that volume's available. So from and since we received a request, we have to reply. It's in rule that we have to give an official response back. As you can see, the drafted letter that was put together just just kind of identifies it's hard to track. It's like, it's it's really unknown and that's really what the letter says. So. That's that's really the backstory. So.
And Mr. Chair, and that was kind of the reason I asked to move it here. I I know we went through the Morrison County one because they were doing the same certificate of need.
Yep.
So in no way, I think there's almost the exact same amount. In no way, this really impacts where they come to us and say, well, we're not getting four thousand tons, so you need to redirect.
Right. It's it's a estimate. The thing, I believe, in in rule, there is the allowance that even if we provide a response to the certificate of need request in the fashion that it's drafted today, Nobles County landfill can take that, make it part of their con application to the PCA. The PCA can then in turn take a look at that and go, well, we don't necessarily agree with that, Stearns County. The agency has the ability to make an allotment and provide that that space available to the landfill in their permitting. So.
Right. Of course, and I voiced my opinion at the Tri County meeting about big picture, about where we're going with it. And I hope we do make some progress eventually. And Mark, that's not on your shoulders. That's a that's a huge piece. And but I appreciate your response because it's, you know, the best we can come up with.
Mr. Chairman, the real details are Morrison County evident when you guys limp or you decrease the amount. As we were saying at the Tri County meeting, as we said in Melrose at that meeting, we need to continue to look for options if Plan A doesn't work. Plus, again, no matter what you do, if you incinerate or anything, you, you know, forty percent has to be landfill. So we do need landfills. And then the biggest elephant in the room is what you don't know is you've got three national companies that Waste Management owns three hundred fifty one landfills. A lot of them are in the state. You have no idea. Everybody, most of the contracts that I'm aware of want to limit the waste stain in Minnesota to limit their liability in other states. But when you've got a company that's got three hundred fifty one landfills, you're going to use three hundred fifty one landfills if you have to. And, you know, not all of them, but the ones that are closest to you. And all three of the nationals own major landfills out of Stearns County. So and obviously, a good way for a national company to hamstring a local company is to, if you're transferring through them, they can add twenty, thirty dollars a ton on tipping fee to make sure that you're not too competitive to them. So there's going to be landfills. I think we, I don't know exactly what happened in Morrison County, but I think we should look at potentially increasing their ability because, again, if Plan A fails, we don't have a Plan B. And I think we made that clear at the Tri County Waste Commission, and PCA hasn't really helped with that Plan B. And there could be a number of factors that would play into that the disposal disposal options that we as a county have become more limited. And then what do we do?
Mr. Chair, one item. Mr. Chair, one, in the conversation I had with Heidi Ringhoffer from the PCA, she does hope to intend to change that reporting requirement, get it off first point and final location. So then, when these come in, it'll make it much easier to look at state numbers and go, how much waste went to wherever? And then we can validate the numbers and give good estimates. It's not that I don't disagree that Stearns County waste probably ends up in Nobles County landfill. I can't tell you how much.
Yep. That's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you folks have heard my frustration at the at the board in reference to Morrison County. It doesn't make sense for me to see waste going from Foley or Rice or from Gilman to come to St. Cloud, get transferred and then end up in Dakota. That doesn't make sense. If we can have safe, reliable landfills, it would be much easier just to have that truck take it ten miles or five miles up to that location. So what we want a motion on the letters, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I'll I'll move item number eleven from consent for approval.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second to approve that letter. Any more discussion on it? If not, let's call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
All right. Thank you. Final item, it's a late add-on to the agenda. This came out of the solid waste, Tri County solid waste meeting last Thursday. I'll do my best to explain this. Tim Oswald was going to be here this morning and unfortunately could not make it to the meeting. So I know there are representatives from Pope Douglas. What this item entails is they are in the process of doing cap funding grant requests at the state for a phase two project. Originally, in twenty nineteen, when the project was initiated, there was a letter of support or a resolution given from Tri County for for the project. In today's application, that that letter of support was resubmitted with their second phase grant cap or cap grant applications. And the question arose basically is, is that a continued support? And and at the Tri County Board, it was indicated that it should come back to each of the individual counties for further discussion and determination if support still stands. So.
Thank, thank you. And Mr. Chair, I'm probably partially responsible, as several of you know, for that just because our last letter was in twenty, fall of twenty nineteen. It's too bad it didn't come back the fall of twenty twenty two for this biennium. We supported it as a two-part project. I mean, the legislature had decided it made more sense to do it in two parts. This seems to actually. This seems to actually maybe help move us forward in a couple of things that we've raised concerns with Pope Douglas about. It would probably look odd if we didn't support the remaining part of this, but it, an old one just didn't make a whole lot of sense. And because it was each county before, and as Commissioner Bertram and I were talking about, it's just helpful when you have something in front of you to actually move on. So I will go ahead and move supportive of this because this, our issues with them, we keep working with them on, the facility ought to help with it. But it would have been kind of odd to have supported the first part of this without doing the second part. And we were basically supporting both parts of it, it's just it's not a current thing.
Mr. Chair, just one, one additional, well, two. I don't recall if I stated Pope Douglas is in the room. So if you would like to hear from the representatives, I think they would be more than willing to address the board if you so chose to. Second is there was a question raised at the Tri-County Board about regarding liability. I believe Commissioner, Commissioner Bertram raised that, given the sense that their cell sheet kind of puts Stearns and Benton and Sherburne as partners to the, partner to this. I know Tim did vet that through legal counsel and the response back to Tim was basically a letter of support, one in a cap funding, a request like this have any liability concerns, so.
We got a, we got a motion, I must, maybe we should have a second before. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, now we got a motion and a second to move forward with the letter. Now, continue discussion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Mark, it would be nice to have that in writing, so get that in writing, please, or ask Tim to.
We have it in an email.
And share the email, please.
I'll ask Tim to forward it through.
And then the, the actual liability question that I raised at Melrose and again at the Tri-County Waste Commission is the total liability, not just for this resolution, but you know, for our, our participation in doing, you know, the contract and other things. The more we do, do we get pulled into that anyway financially if something goes south? I agree, and we all, the Tri-County Waste Commission did agree that the 2019 resolution was being used as support. There's two new commissioners in Sherburne County, two of the current commissioners in Benton County didn't even, weren't even aware of it. So they're serving, but they've never seen it. And then, of course, me, so there, there's enough new commissioners, so that's why we're doing this. And this was the right thing to do. Plus, we wanted something in writing, you know, to show that we, you know, what, what we're acting on, I guess. And now we have that.
And, and I very much agree with what Commissioner Bertram just brought up. I think part of a challenge can be sometimes is when there's a handout, there's a handout, which is a really good handout. I'm looking at Pope Douglas. But it lists us as partners in this bonding project and we're contracting through Tri-County with them. We're not actually helping build it. This goes back to the liability issue, right? So in, in a way, I get that there's non-legal definitions, obviously, of partnering, but for the purposes of any liability, that's not our intention to be, we're not going to be part owners, we're not going to be part of anything. And our contracting with Pope Douglas liability is, is, that's how these contracts get so damn long, is laid out within that. I mean, so I, unless, I haven't heard anything back from our county attorney's office saying that we should be concerned about any liability with regard to that. And again, I do absolutely agree with what you've raised.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I'll feel more comfortable when we have that in writing, you know, that there isn't. The motion, remind me, is to pass the resolution.
Is to, to support, have the letter of support, that is, that is, that is the motion.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. One, this is a sizable request, 12.8, and we're all following the bonding stuff at the state and what's all going on. And we're also following the, the supportive of burners and non-supportive burners and all that stuff. So that, that makes me nervous. And it says in the last paragraph in Tim's memo, it says anticipates contributing 6.67 million. You know, when you start dealing with 12.8 million and you say, I anticipate, you know, if I say I might buy a lunch, that's a $10 deal. If you say I anticipate, you know, contributing 6.675 million, I would think that there should be a better word than anticipate when you're starting to deal with these kind of numbers. And then it says that it's going to support the waste recycling programs of the community. Again, every area needs that, I don't think of the community, it's Stearns County, just for what it's worth. And then with the recycling rate, he's talking about, Tim is, the upgrades will increase recycling commodity yields from the current rate of 2.58, increasing revenues of the facility. God hope that the recycling markets do go up, but right now, if you'd increase recycling, it actually would cost more because the recycling market's so bad, it would actually end up hurting you. Again, our goal has always been to 100% use the steam and electricity that's being generated. That, that's what we really, I think, need to. And then in the resolution, Mr. Chairman, it says three connected cap grants. I believe this is a second, and if there's another one or, but again, it's 12.8 million, it's a huge amount. We all have a lot of bonding requests. The Highway 23 Coalition does, or Pursuing Trails. So again, this gets a little dicey for our other bonding requests that we've done. And it says in here that, uh, Stearns County, in the resolution, Stearns County Board of Commissioners is in support of Pope Douglas Solid Waste Management cap project at 30.23 million. A lot of numbers, it's more than I ever saw on the farm, so I'm just a little nervous. I'm not going to support this because I think my number one role, as I shared at the Tri-County Waste Commission, is fiduciary. And I'm nervous until we get more answers on the overall scheme of things. I can't, I can't support it.
Mr. Chair, and there's others who can obviously speak more directly to this. My understanding is that was the total number, which we saw, I know you didn't, back in 2019. And both of us, obviously, have done enough bonding bills that we know this is from a different part of the bonding bill than the transportation one, so it's really not in competition and it is anticipated this will go in there. If, if one gets passed, right? I mean, we just saw this huge thing about, are they going to do cash? Are they not going to, you know, there's the machinations at play right now. I, I personally am supportive of it, in part because we went through this in 20, fall of 2019, and the updated facility will make a difference. The challenges that we've been working on, to me, are outside of that. And if we don't actually have a fully updated facility, it makes it more complicated. I believe the words got put in there that Tim put in there because we were saying we should at least reference some of it. I think the bottom line for the committee, the legislative committee, is they're just wanting to see that there's support for the finishing up the project, that they are midway through. And I understand, I understand your concerns. I mean, we're going to vote differently on this and I respect that. And that's not to say that I don't share some of your, your other concerns.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Clark, you're, you're right. The only thing I, you know, the only thing that I would want to point out, we both were there when bonding bills are done. And what people have a tendency to do is they look at the list and they say, well, you guys are getting that one, so we're not going to give you that one. They might not be related, but they try to spend the bonding monies as best as they can to get more support. So let's just say a representative, Senator Westrom or, or Senator, you know, the St. Cloud community, they'll say, well, we're giving 2.8 or 12.8 million for that project, which benefits you guys, so we're not going to give you a bonding, you know, that kind of happens.
Right, and, and Mr. Chair, to that point, again, I mean, they tend to look at it in different areas and it's like, what do you need to get in there to get a vote, right? For somebody for like Senator Westrom, this is the kind of thing that could make a big difference for him, to say yes. It may not, but it might be, you know? So they're trying to figure out how they get there. And I'm smiling in part because one year, former commissioner and then Representative Larry Haas actually had the most projects of anybody on either body in his district. And I got requested by the House Committee Chair to come over and explain why we should get all of this, which is, was highly unusual, but we got them all. So I've got a good belief in the advocacy and all of this. And we both, we'll have to go have that, that barley pop beverage after four o'clock one of these days to swap some of those stories.
The best story, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Clark, I've got is I don't ever do a bonding request when it's in one line because the governor's got the authority to delete the line. If it's in two lines, you can't. So you learn real fast, you make sure that your bonding request is over more than one sentence. I'd say that we can call the question.
Okay.
Oh, I was just going to say, for clarification on community, it does say the community it serves and not just community as in one community.
And I'm not sure what that community is.
Lee, do you have any comments about the letter?
I have none.
Okay, all right. And I, I will call the question, but before I call the question, you know, I, I, this is not a commitment by us. It's just a, a letter of recommendation and a letter of support for what they're requesting. And, and, and so that being said, I, I just, I have, as you folks know from the Solid Waste Commission, I have concerns about the way we've been dealing with Pope Douglas and, and the relationship we've had with him. And, and our inability, perhaps even just to get meetings and, and come together and have discussion. It took us over a year.
All I care about is the liability aspect. I'll do business with them, no problem. I don't want to be liable for anything. The contract and the amount delivered.
That, and, and, and that's, that's your concern, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. My concern too is, is again, big picture, and we don't seem to be resolving that big picture. And that big picture is, is it, are we really doing justice by burning that stuff? And is it, can we do better than, than just burn, push it, push it up the stack?
No, we haven't.
Okay, and, and are we getting the return on what we're burning? Otherwise, you know, we shouldn't be looking at, and I, I want to have that discussion. Likewise, our obligation to our constituents, the people that have to pay that garbage delivery bill, okay? They, our obligation to them, again, continually increases 4% regardless of what we do. And I was in opposition to begin with, from that, from the start. And they didn't necessarily offer us a chance to, to debate that or to, to contest that, hold them accountable. And that becomes inflationary. Those rates for, for going up to the burner are going to continue compounded with 4% increases year after year after year. And I have not seen their ability to reduce costs. Or even if they get this grant from the state and then they get this recycling back, is that going to actually be advantageous to the cost of operations? I would, hopefully would have a, a positive effect to cost of operations, which should bring the cost then, those delivery costs down. But, but we're going to end up, and they're going to request that 4%. So just, again, it, it's only a letter of recommendation, but, but because of principle, I'm not, I'm not going to endorse the letter just because I think we can do better with communications and we can do better with the way we're operating there, so I'll call the question.
Can I just ask, add one more thing, Mr. Chair? So, you know, being an alternate to Tri-County Solid Waste, obviously I'm not, you know, as in tuned to it as you guys are. But, you know, I think one of the things you have to look at too is if, if, if you don't have this going to an incinerator, it's going to a landfill. So then do you just create one source and then now, now you're, now you're a captive audience too? So, I mean, getting rid of disposing of waste is not going to be easy, no matter, you know, how you look at it. And I know.
The horse is dead.
Okay.
I was wondering when that was coming.
No, and, and Commissioner Lenz, yeah, we, we can have that debate and I think we need to have that debate. All right.
Yep.
I'll call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Yeah, I'm opposed to that too.
You, you made a second. You seconded it.
I'll take roll call.
Randy?
So just to be clear, maybe restate the motion.
Okay, you want to do one?
The motion is to provide the letter of support for the bonding project, nothing else.
We're accomplishing anything. We've been spinning our wheels here for 45 minutes. We're supposed to feel good about that? Hell, no.
Commissioner Bertram?
No.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Notch?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
No.
Commissioner Persky?
Nay.
Ales, three to two.
Okay, Ben, I think you're up.
Now that we've sharpened our teeth.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ben Anderson, Parks Director, and your agenda item is H1. You can be found on packet pages 181 through 183 and is regarding your consideration of authorizing park staff to pursue the Bible property as an addition to Rockville County Park. I believe, yes, up on the screen, there'll be a map that shows where this property is located as it relates to the park. Just a brief history, it was, the park was acquired in 2007 and the park master plan was completed and adopted in 2009. The property that you're looking at would add approximately 22 and a quarter acres to the existing park, bringing this park, total park acreage up to about 316 acres. This property includes a 30 by 64 foot pole shed with 10 foot sides. However, there is no electricity. And this property also contains a small tamarack swamp and wetland area that makes the north part of the property unlikely to be developed. If this property were to be added to the park, we could develop an additional half mile trail, complete both upland and wetland habitat restoration projects. The 2023 estimated market value for the property is about $162,000, with the taxes being a little over $1,600. At the Park Commission's March 8th meeting, they unanimously recommended that the county board consider purchasing this property since it has been identified in the Rockville County Park Master Plan. Now, before we get into potential funding options, are there any specific questions about the property itself?
Ben, are you going to present a layout? Just because the property is in relationship to the parking lot, the pavilion, the restrooms as well. So, I mean, the, the location of that is just not planned. It's got a high value because of where it's located in relationship to the amenities. Were you going to talk about that?
Yep, yep, I can jump into that. So the, so the cursor that you see on the screen up here, this parcel right here is where our picnic, about right here is where our picnic shelter is located. Our parking lot is located directly adjacent to this property line, as well as this property for ease of access has an easement that runs right through the county park to get to this property. So presumably, if it does get sold to a private party and they decide to put a house in there, really the only access, as was mentioned, would be through, directly through the park to get in there. So that is one, you know, consideration that we could get rid of one easement. Now, that easement isn't going to completely go away because of the adjacent parcel right here, which is still in private ownership. And again, they have that easement through here, but it would eliminate potentially one of those going directly through the park.
Do you have a, a picture of the amenities though?
No, I don't have a picture of that right now.
All right, because to me, that, that's one of the selling points is that it's only feet away from the, our, our restrooms, our parking lot, our shelter and our storage. And with, when increased use happens there, we have the, the horses that come out there, we got the snowmobiles that come out there and we've got the canoes that come out there that that space would be very well needed, so, okay. It's just not a piece of, of woods and property. There's actually a, a good usability for that property.
Correct.
All right.
All right, so potential fundings, we've identified, identified two potential funding sources. The first being through the Capital Improvement Plan. So the county board identified $650,000 for potential use for acquisitions. That's one of the potential funding sources. The second potential funding source would be to go for legacy grant dollars to purchase this. With the legacy grant dollars, there's a little bit of a, obviously, it takes time to apply for them and get them. So the family was gracious enough to reach out to us. This property is not on the market yet, however, it will go on the market soon, especially if the county decides not to pursue this property. But they reached out to us, but there is some timing that they would like to see the county potentially move forward with this. So they're looking at like the end of May is when they would like to see some sort of action taken on whether the county is actually interested in to pursue this. So obviously, with our grant legacy funding, that's not an option because our grant applications aren't due until the end of July and we don't get a final answer on whether we've received those fundings until the following summer. So we're looking, you know, probably. So we're looking, you know, probably May, June of 2024, and when we'd have those answers. To help offset some of that, we have a community member who would be potentially willing, if the county is interested, they would be willing to purchase this property and hold it, which would then allow the county the time it needs to apply for this grant and go forward. Now, we were very clear with the community member that grants are not guaranteed. So we may or may not get the funding if that's the route that the board decides to go. And I believe they understood that when we had that conversation yesterday. Commissioner Persky may be able to verify that.
You know, we have the option, you know, taking, like Ben had said, out of the capital. And I, you know, those capital dollars are dollars that we can use to invest. If we go the route of legacy funds, there was an anonymous buyer that said they would buy the property, hold the property, and of course, we would not have to pay any more than the appraised value because we can't with legacy dollars. That they would hold it until those legacy funds would become available and then we would purchase it. So there would be minimal cost to the county to acquire the property. And again, it's timely because the owners at the present time want to get out of it for personal reasons. And that's, you know, up to them to sell it to whoever. But they were kind enough to approach Ben and approach the board that the property is available. And again, its location to our amenities makes it a critical piece.
Mr. Chair, I guess I would like to see us apply for the legacy funding. I mean, we just approved the, working with the Woken property. And I think, to me, it'd be more prudent to look at doing that option because we have, you know, that larger project looking at us too. I mean, yeah, it's perfect location. I mean, it's right adjoining the property. But, you know, if we can work out this other arrangement, I would support that route.
Is that a motion?
That would be a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay.
How do we protect all parties concerned?
Okay.
God, you're dealing with something that's pretty damn idealistic, in my opinion.
We could have first rate of refusal.
Yeah.
Could have what?
First rate of refusal.
Well, that'd be, that'd be a start. And then during the holding period, things, some other details, like who takes care of the taxes? Do we have, what's our liability in terms of trespass? Those are the things. Can we get something a little bit more sorted out? You guys are coming up with a, I like the general idea, but it's pretty Pollyanna, in my opinion.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
We're really just asking for a head nod to move ahead and work out some of the details.
All right.
For, I think we would need an appraisal.
At least appreciate that aspect.
Right.
And that was my understanding too. We're not, we're not entering an agreement.
You're not approving the purchase.
Because we don't know about the seller either.
Correct. And, I mean, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, so I did reach out, and appraisal is going to cost, it'll come out of my budget. It'll cost roughly between probably $3,000 and $4,000 to complete this appraisal. A survey is going to be another $2,000 to $4,000. And I think we're going to want both those on the front end to move, potentially move forward with these, you know, if we are serious about this, so.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer, if I can, is that a reasonable price on an appraisal? Is that a reasonable price on an appraisal?
How much?
$3,800?
Oh, you're getting a deal.
You shouldn't have said that publicly.
Strike that from the record. Commissioner Bertram?
Mr. Chairman, Ben and I talked about this yesterday. I don't have a problem with, you know, seeing what you can piece together. I do, my gut reaction is we've got a 294-acre park, you know, that's adjacent to this. I told Ben, how much do we need in one area? So that I, we had a frank discussion. Ben's already said, shared with us twice about a staffing issue. Well, now you add more property. And we've got some priorities. This is no different than us in our private lives. Do you shingle the house or you side the house? Maybe you don't do them both, or you put new windows in? Or do you add the garage before you do that? So, you know, the finishing of the Recoray Trail to Glacial Lakes, the county's not directly involved with that, but will participate. The Woken property, which, you know, I certainly supported and we're working on, how much do we do? There's a major property coming up in Western Searns County that's got a potential. So what do we do? So I'm not opposed to pursuing it, seeing what you can come up with. But I think it's been expressed, just be very sensitive. If someone is nice enough to say, well, we'll buy it, with, if it does work out, then we'll give it to you. Not that we're on the hook. This is not a final decision. It was, this is no different than with the Justice Center when we gave the authority of $320 million to pursue it with the Let's Say Church. I asked the question, well, if we say yes on this, are we bound by this? And I was told no on that, and that's accurate. And the same thing with this. If we give you the nod to see what you can do, that, from my perspective, doesn't mean, yep, we're going to do this. And I don't want the landowner, or the Parks Commission, or you, or who am I missing? Oh, this generous person who I know, who we know, to think that this is going to be 100% done. So I don't, I'm not going to oppose you pursuing options with no commitment.
And my big concern is, again, the way we could get it would be through the, okay, is through the legacy dollars opposed to budget dollars?
You're not going to change anybody's mind on anything at this point. God.
Lee's getting hungry.
Okay.
Right.
More, I gotta go to the bathroom.
Commissioner Percy, Chair, Commissioners, just one final comment. I just want to make sure that it's not an automatic no. And we're, you know, we're being due diligent with our time because it is precious, so.
And Mr. Chairman, we're in agreement, and I don't want you to take it as an automatic yes from me.
Yeah.
Joe, you do have a motion in a second.
Correct. We got a motion in a second, and that is to go ahead and to pursue it, correct?
Via legacy fund.
You via legacy fund.
You guys are remarkable. You make agreements sound like disagreement. I don't know. This is going to be an interesting four years, Jeff.
Any further discussion?
No.
I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Jody?
We could see her twice in one day.
Dr. Williams, if I can, Dr. Williams, what's the record for longest meeting?
Close.
We're getting there, are we not?
Keep moving. We've got people waiting.
This might be a record since I've been here, anyway.
All right.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jody Tyke, County Engineer. My item today begins on packet page 184. I'm asking the board to award the contract for the 2023 resurfacing contract. We opened those bids on March 9th. And as you can see from page 185, they are 6.8% overestimate, the low bid is, and that was that of Knife River Corporation. So that's roughly $742,000 over. So I have talked with both the Auditor's Office and County Administration on how I would like to fund this overage out of our budget rather than eliminating a project. So basically, the Highway Department proposes using approximately $176,000 from their fund balance to cover the shortfall in the county levy-funded portion. And then we would borrow ahead on our wheelage tax and then therefore just program less projects in 2024 out of the wheelage tax as we update our road program in the next month or so. So the Highway Department is recommending awarding this contract to Knife River. These prices are similar to, I guess, what we found out other counties have been seeing.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Commissioner Bertram? Second. Commissioner Lenzmeyer? Further discussion?
Well, it could be an, oh my gosh. I don't know if that's what OMG stands for, but.
Oh. Any other questions? No, Jody, let's get it done. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
And I have no miscellaneous unless the board has something for me.
Just a quick question. Do you think you're going to have a lot more repair and maintenance this year?
Well, anybody who drove here probably saw the condition of city streets, county roads, state highways. That is one reason, I will tell you, we did not propose taking any money from our bituminous patch budget in maintenance. Initially, we were going to take a small portion. And as I thought about it last week and went through some of our budget items, reviewed them with Sarah Butch from the Auditor's Office, I decided taking money from bituminous patch in maintenance was not a good idea. So, yes.
Thank you. Okay. I was hoping you'd say that.
Thank you.
Okay. Randy, we're going to move to item J.
Yes, we can try to do as quickly as possible here. So it's a public hearing on an off-sale liquor application by Chris Schiffler for Shady Sunset Bay. And I do believe we have at least one title quater here today. So if you would like to open that meeting.
Okay. Then I'll go ahead and I'll open the public hearing on the off-sale liquor application. Is there anybody here that wanted to testify? That's okay.
No, it's, uh.
Sandy Clocker, Avon, thinking of four reasons that would be a good idea to grant this application. Number one, I support small businesses. I don't want money to go to the big boxes, Sam's and Costco's. Number two, we set a precedent, you did actually, for an off-sale at the gas station, maybe less than a mile away. Number three, today we talked about illegal fentanyl, cocaine, and heroin in our discussions, and this is actually a legal regulation. And then number four, probably the most important is when I'm out fishing for walleye on the lake on a hot summer day and my husband gets tired from netting on my walleye, at least I can run and get him a six-pack of beer. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Sandy. Somebody else want to testify?
Hello, again.
Welcome to a county meeting. What did you think of your time in the back of the room?
It's good. I was a lot.
Okay, all right.
We're at the store, as you can tell. You guys granted us the off-sale liquor last July, I believe it was. I'm just, we're just asking not to have Shady some off-sale because we are only a half-mile away. We are open the same time of off-sale, going to go, you know, we have the stores open. We close at 10:00. It's 10:00. There's not going to be any sale after that guaranteed because we're closed. Not that you're sitting at a bar and the person at the bar goes at 11 o'clock, hey, I want something to, you know, drink on the way home. Can you get me a 12-pack? Can we rely on their bartender to say no? And then when we first came, you guys had asked us, is there any other off-sales close? There wasn't.
Yeah.
And so that should pertain here. Is there off-sale close? Yes, we're a half-mile away. We will be open by Memorial Day. We're not open yet just because when we got approved, it came into winter. Winter is not a good time for financing, especially in a convenience store type of business. It's seasonal. So now we're up and running.
And so what, your hours of operation would be what?
Same time as the store. So alcohol, we open at 5:00. Alcohol will not open until 8:00. And then we close actually at 9:00, 8:00 in winter, but we're going to extend that, we're going to extend until 10:00. So we will be open until 10:00, Monday through Saturdays.
Okay.
Just a quick question. Do you think having another off-sale like close would have an impact?
Yes.
Yeah. My, oh, we're, yeah.
Sorry, he had a stroke eight years ago, so it's difficult to talk.
That was.
They will be taking business away from us. We would not be able to take business away from them. If you think about it, someone's going to go to the restaurant, to Shady's, to have a drink, have supper. Oh, yep, I'm going to get a 12-pack and go. That's one of our customers that's gone. And then we also lose a sale of, hey, they're a stop-up for some liquor. Oh, yeah, why don't we get some gas? Why don't we get some snacks to go with it? So, yeah, we will be losing money that way.
And you're the new owners of the store?
Yes.
And we got to do it just that way, right?
Yeah.
Yep. We are, I mean.
And I'm going to, if you want to speak, we'll give you the time. Do the best you can. That's fine.
I, sometimes words, not, not the word.
Words come and go.
Yeah, sometimes nothing, sometimes.
And this is our main source of income. So it would hurt us to have another off-sale close by because right now we're putting a whole bunch of money into adding that on. We can't do it fast because we are us. That's it.
Have you guys had a conversation with, like, Sunset or Chris?
Nope.
No.
Well, we didn't know it until later on that he was going for off-sale because when Randers and Voight had it, they actually were going to go for it, an off-sale, and then when they heard that we want to have off-sale, they supported us. They said, no, we're not going to have that. We're going to support the store. So we, sorry, assumed that the next person would do the same.
Is that how the landing was too? Did they have off-sale when it was the landing?
Three-two, I believe. Yep, I think he only had three-two.
Good, thanks.
And Dave was very particular of actually who he sold it to.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Bertram, do you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, when you say five, I don't want to take it for granted, 5:00 a.m.
Yep.
Do you know when Shady's is planning to open? Or we maybe can get that from Chris.
Yeah. Right now, they're not open until the afternoons, and they're closed Mondays and Tuesdays.
Got it.
So we're, we're open. And I looked at all the times. I don't know them offhand, but we comply to all the times that are there.
And I guess, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, the reason I'm asking that is you're going to be open many more hours than they will be to potentially help you with what your concern is.
We'll be open more hours during the legal off-sale time.
And oftentimes, Mr. Chairman, when the credit union came to Painesville, the two banks were just beside themselves. The credit union was going to take everything away from them. Within one year, their assets all increased over 500,000. Car dealers, you hear that a lot, when there's a second, third, fourth car dealer, I don't know if that hap, you know, then there's more people that buy cars there because there's more, I don't know if that happens. And I think people, like in Richmond, I know for a fact, you know, Jill's is there, and the Jack's is there, and the Brinkies is there. You know, people kind of like to do their business, fill up with gas at Jack's and get the liquor, you know, and they have other off-sale options too. But people get into a habit of, we're going to go there for dinner, but we're, you know, we're going to buy an off-sale or the case of beer or whatever, someplace else maybe, or whatever. But hopefully, especially in a small town like that, everybody can coexist and figure out how to help each other out somehow.
But that is a small town. I mean, literally, we have us. Patty at the ballroom, and now Shady's. That's it. There's no, there's nothing else besides some, like, Ken's Iron. So.
Church.
It's, yeah, the church that uses our parking lot. So it's not like the other small, you know, those are small towns. We're a community. We're it. You know, and for us to put so much into it, to say, oh, I hope this, you know, competition brings us more. No, I'm already competing. We are with Avon, Albany, Holdingford. We have enough competition. We don't need it half-mile down the road. And I know a lot of the people of Avon, or San Ana, really don't want it there because we'll have more control. They want control about who's drinking and the driving and who's getting what done and all of that. Because when one guy gets out of jail, the word goes around and we all are on the lookout. You know, it's going to be the same thing. Are the ones who are the drinkers going to be down drinking and get served? You know, the 12-pack because they won't get caught.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, you're going to, wanted to talk?
Oh, no.
We're not, we're not looking to compete in the liquor industry as far as off-sale goes. That's definitely not what we do in our industry. I don't have a bar that does over 1% in off-sale. It's super, just for convenience for our customers is what it is. That's why we have cigarettes. It's a convenience for them. You know, they're out on the lake, they want to get something to drink. You know, they're out on the lake, they wanna get something to drink. Convenient. That's the off-sale for us, so it's not a make or break for us. We're not, we don't advertise a lot. We don't, we're not cheap. It's not cheaper than going to a liquor store. They're always gonna be cheaper than us, I would assume. That's, that's pretty much all I really got for you. I don't have a whole lot more.
Okay, so what, if I may, what does your inventory look? I mean, you're gonna have a...
We have no open showroom of liquor. No, there's not. We don't have a, we don't have a liquor area that you can go look or anything like that. It's just, they need a case of beer, we got a case of beer. We don't carry, we usually don't carry separate items, even like canned beer. We don't usually have canned beer. We use, we use bottles, so if that's what we have to sell, we'll sell you some as a convenience. We don't have a showroom by any means like what they're gonna have over there. We're not trying to compete on the off-sale liquor. We're on-sale, we're food. That's 99.9% of our sales, not, not on on-sale liquor, so, or excuse me, off-sale.
Randy? And then, Joe, if you're done with testimony, you just need to close the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody have questions for Chris?
No.
Would you, would you have the option to expand in, with this license, would he have the option to expand and have a separate room like a regular retailer?
Well, if he, if he changes the physical characteristics, yeah, then that actually goes through state approval too, so yeah.
Yeah, that'd have to be county and state approved if I actually had to do that, so...
Okay. I'm Tony or Chris, you know, I understand what you want to do and it makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, but by the same token, I want to see a convenience store, in a little place like that, at least just not stay open when people need gas, that they can't make it because, you know, you're...
We're also not open Mondays, Tuesdays. We don't open Wednesdays till 4:00. We're not open on Thursdays till 4:00. So, our hours are super, super regulated. We have, we have six hours on Wednesdays, six hours on Thursdays, and we have Fridays, Saturdays. We also have Sundays, which they, they aren't open on Sundays there, so...
So, just to be clear, if he, if he does want to do that, if he does want to do that, there'd be another application or a change.
Okay, so then if you would be expanding, there'd be another application?
Right, yep.
That helps me. Okay. I, well, any, okay, you're finished?
Yep, I'm all done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to testify? Is there anybody else want to testify?
I need a couple more things. I need to come up.
Sure, go ahead. Did you state your name and address again?
Oh, I forgot again. This is like last time. Kelly Caffers, 16915 County Road, 52 Avon, Minnesota. The one thing is that if off-sale is not a big part of the business, it's a convenience for them, why wouldn't they got, realize they didn't have a license for it? Why didn't they stop and put the signs up that we do not have off-sale? I found out from the community, not friends, from the community, that they were selling off-sale. You know, just following the rules, that's what I kind of keep back on. It's, the rules aren't followed, and how can you trust someone to, like I say, to sell after 10:00? Who's gonna catch them? We're in the middle of nowhere. You know, we're five miles from everything.
Randy? Just a little clarification on that. So, when they originally applied for it, they applied for on and off, I believe, another liquor license too, and we were able to process the on-sale license, but the off-sale, we were not able to get a public hearing set up in time in December. So, they started in January with off-sale. At that point, they thought they had the off-sale license also, but they didn't have that, and that's kind of where we dropped the ball because we, we didn't pick that back up in finishing that processing. So, when we did find out that they didn't have that, when we were made aware of that, we told the applicant that they couldn't do that. In my understanding, that was the end of January, and he finished, or then he didn't sell any more off-sale. So, that time in January, I think there was a misunderstanding.
This was, sorry to say, that was, the signs are up just last month, the latest, off-sale on the doors.
Okay. Any other questions?
And we are open Sundays.
Oh.
Yep, we're open seven days a week.
Okay. Again, for clarification, as far as sales, does sale go till 10:00 or till 9:00 in state of Minnesota?
10:00, Mondays through Saturdays, and Sundays, 11 to 4, I believe. Or it's later.
Six, right?
Six, no? Okay. Yep, the six. We're open till 8, 9 every night. We're gonna switch our hours, you know?
Do you go by the church clock, or do you go by...
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay. Just curious.
Steve knew the answer to that one.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else? We're gonna, we'll go ahead and move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other discussion on this? Chris, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold you to your word, so I appreciate you being honest about where you're going, and if you're gonna expand, we want to see that.
Yeah, and one more thing, if you guys don't mind, I'm not, we weren't, we, we also assumed that we had our off-sale liquor license because we applied for it. We did all that. It didn't, Tammy called me and told me we didn't. We stopped sale of it. I let my general manager know that we weren't selling it. We have some signs hanging up that we have off-sale, you know, along with our food specials, stickers on the doors, things like that, but it wasn't, and we weren't selling it then. We had our, we had signage up. We covered it up with tape then, and now when we get approved, we can take it off or change them, so...
Okay.
Just saying.
All right, and for order purposes, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we can go ahead and move it then forward.
Mr. Chairman, just a question. These licenses are annually renewed, correct?
Yes, this is a shorter time period because he just purchased establishment.
Yeah, normally, what is it?
Normally, it's a July through June.
June, July?
Yep.
Excuse, did we, for, did we move it and second it?
We did not.
We did not. So, then I'll look for a motion.
I'll move, Mr. Chairman, to approve the liquor license for the one-year trial and see how everything works.
Okay, got a motion?
The license just through the end of June is what it is.
Okay.
Okay.
Through the end of June.
Through the end of June?
Yes.
Through the end of June.
Okay, got a motion?
Well, second it so we can get discussion if there's any.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Go ahead, because of a hesitation on the second, what's the discussion, I guess? Do we, anybody have reservations about doing it?
Mars is dead.
Okay. Steve?
Well, I, you know, I know that area quite well, and, and I'm, you know, I know, you know, Shady's, and I've been to the store, more so with previous owners.
Yeah.
And I, I want to see them both survive.
Yeah.
And I, I know margins in convenience stores are really tight.
Yeah.
And, you know, hopefully, my hope is that in the long run, after this goes through, that they both find their, it's a cohesive thing, that it works well for both of them.
Mr. Chairman, and obviously, these are never easy decisions. Nobody wants to hurt somebody or whatever, but on the same token, there's no orange button, it's a green or a red button, so we gotta, you know, vote for it or against it.
Yeah.
I believe that, and, and, you know, Shady's are in enough locations that I've experienced it directly. They constantly are trying to partner with the community on different things. I believe when the two of them do talk, which, who asked? I think Commissioner Notch asked, if you talk together, I'd encourage you to talk together because I know Shady's has the ability, because I've seen him do it, say, come in and eat dinner, and go over and fill up with gas, you know, give them a coupon, or, you know, working with them to build the two, raise the two boats. There was a car dealer in Painesville that was upset years ago because a used car lot was coming in, and I talked to the owner of one dealership, and she was beside herself upset. And a half an hour later, I talked to the other dealership, and he was excited as heck. He said, "The chances I'm gonna sell more cars just went up because people are gonna come to town, and it's not gonna be on that lot or that lot, but it's gonna be on my lot." I've seen the Shady's locations, they are not a liquor store, and I have been in the store years ago. You know, you've got all the lines of liquor, and you've got what people look for in a liquor store, you know, off-sale store. I'm confident, and I hope, that the two of you can work together. The number of hours, the reason I ask that is the number of hours that, that, you know, the store is open versus Shady's are open, that's a priority for the store as it should be, not for Shady's. I think this can work. It's, sometimes it's tough conversations and unfortunately, tough decisions that a board like this has to make. So, I, I have faith that they both can and will work with each other and both succeed.
All right, and Chris, I just want to echo that. I would think if somebody's coming in for a product, you don't have it, you're gonna send them right up the street.
Without a doubt.
Yeah. Okay. All right, I'll call the question, then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion passes. Okay? Thank you very much. Wow, item K, issues by Commissioner. We'll start that one there with Commissioner Notch.
I had something earlier, but I forgot.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Clark?
I'm probably largely in the same place. Dr. Williams sent us some information about a training coming up that we all might be interested in. There's gonna be four different locations. There's been some really good work with these folks, so would highly recommend it. And that's all I probably have the capacity for right now.
Okay. I don't have anything other than...
More than I have. What's the training for?
Highway 23 Coalition is going down to the Capitol tomorrow, so we'll be having an open house for legislators between 10:00 and 2:00. So, I don't know if there, if we have anything else that's burning for issues that need to be talked about, if we do see one, we can mention it to them, so...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be there as well, and I've set up five meetings with five legislators to talk about a host of things, so I will be there. Two, two issues. One, I'm finally getting into my whole cycle of attending all these meetings and getting that all figured out, so I am doing that part of it, just so if anybody's concerned. Two things I'd like to bring up at some point. I don't know how to do this, or where, I'd like to have a discussion from the board on a moment of silence or invocation of some kind, along with pledge allegiance, and also, I'd like to revisit the solar application, the staff approval of one megawatt that was decided last year. I'd like to have a discussion on those two issues. I don't know if we do that in a work session, or if we put that on the agenda, or if, what, two others of us have to say, "Yep, we'd like to talk about that." So, I'm not sure what that process is, but I'd like to discuss those two issues, please.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you know, those are probably two things that I wouldn't automatically put on the agenda, that as Commissioner Bertram suggests, if, if the board has, wants to put those on an upcoming agenda, then I'll do that. If, you know, I mean, you could do it by motion, or if you're all comfortable with it, however we want to do that. But I, I mean, Commissioner Bertram and I already talked about, and I said, it really would be up to the board if we're gonna put that on an upcoming agenda.
Well, we should probably, Mr. Chairman, just be getting an update about the permitting because we said that we were gonna keep reviewing it. That's different than looking to change it right now, but maybe that might be an appropriate place to start.
That's actually a good suggestion. We'd put that on an agenda with a...
We were asking for that anyways.
With an update, and where it goes from there, it goes from there.
And honestly, it might be at the end of this legislative session, once we get, see if they've gotten our tax provision passed as well.
Yeah. Yeah, once the session's over, things pick up.
Yep. Commissioner Lenzmeyer, we've been waiting to hear from you since 9:00.
No, I'm, I've had enough.
You've had enough?
Yeah.
Well, with, with that...
The only thing I don't understand, Jeff, if you've got something you want us to do, bring it up.
Okay.
Well, and I do, and I think...
You always will.
Yep, and so, again, I don't know if that's an agenda item, or...
Yeah, that's what issues by Commissioner, I think. We don't get to just put items on there. We'd have really super-long agenda items.
So, again, so we address the solar thing.
The solar, I think, is a good idea. We'll just bring back a report since you made that change, and where that discussion goes, it goes.
And then a moment of silence?
I think you should discuss that, yeah.
We can do that.
Like, right now?
Actually, yeah.
I don't think, no. Let's do another meeting. It's been a long meeting.
As quickly as possible.
We're adjourned. For adjourned.